Good evening, everybody. I'd like to officially, we're going to call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to open the public board meeting on March 12th? Motion by Joshua, second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor. Motion passes nine, no, eight to zero with two absent. I'd like to thank the members of the JROTC from Frederick Douglass High School, Cadet Briasia Griffin, Cadet Avery Kinton, Cadet Eric Hint, Cadet Anisha Vanei, and Cadet Timon Johnson. I'd also like to thank the student performers from City Neighbors High School. Yeah, they were awesome. Under the direction of Ms. Shakaya A. Payler, the students who performed were Rachel Navaya Alexander, Brianna James, Shania Walker, Sidney Joseph, Amber McKiver, Michaela Davis, Jaisha Dingell, Isaiah Williams, Shamar Hodges, Devon Ellis, Donate Brown, Tyrone Lifcy, Shantarian Graham, Julya Dent, Tyler Harris, Amelia Moore, Jordan Harris, Deion Jones, Andrew Jones, and Kylie. Let's give them another hand. I'd like to turn now to Commissioner Chinia, who will lead us in a moment of silence.
I'd like to take this time to recognize the passing of one of City Schools students. Skylar Alston was a first grader. She attended Hollabird Elementary. She had a huge smile, a great sense of humor, and a contagious laugh. She was kind and thoughtful. Her favorite subjects were math and art. Skylar loved unicorns and the color purple. She gave good hugs and was a true pleasure to teach. Skylar will be greatly missed by her family, friends, teachers, and school community. I ask you, please, join me in a moment of silence for Skylar.
I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the prior open session meeting minutes. Moved by Commissioner Bondima, second. Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners Lynn McFadden, Bondima, Chinia Kashani, Frank Reed Berkeley. Motion passes eight to zero with two absent. I'd like to have a motion to approve the prior closed session summary. Moved by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia Kashani, Frank Reed Berkeley. Motion passes seven-zero with two absent. We now have reports from the board committees that have met since the last time there was a public board meeting. Has the operations committee met? I didn't think so. Okay. You want to, but I'd like to ask Commissioner Bondima if she could make a report as our representative to the MAAB legislative committee.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, MAAB met to discuss the current legislature legislative session. You should know we are tracking nearly 400 education bills this session. Much of our discussion centered around the Kerwin legislation named the Blueprint for Merlin's Future, House Bill 1413, and Senate Bill 1030. This is really known as the baby Kerwin because it provides statewide about $320 million for fiscal year '20 and requests the governor to release $750 million for the fiscal year '21 when main Kerwin bill is introduced with the new funding formulas. The bill is very long, but the main points that I want to cover is that there is a recognition of a concentration of poverty school grant, money allocated for struggling learners, additional special education funding, and teacher salary increases. The pre-kindergarten grants and the declining enrollment grants also continue. A newly created Office of Program Evaluation and Government Accountability Office is created within the Department of Legislative Services. The new office will conduct performance and operation evaluations if requested by the Joint Audit and Evaluation Committee of the Merlin General Assembly. The first hearing before the House Appropriations and Ways and Means Committee about Kerwin occurred March 6, and Vice Chair Chinia testified along with the Chief of Staff. Tomorrow, the Board Chair will testify before the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee in Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Commissioner Bondima? Has the Policy Committee met since, I didn't think so. Teaching and Learning, Commissioner Berkeley?
We met a week ago at 3:30 in the afternoon here, and we heard about the kindergarten readiness assessment results for 1819. We had an update on English learners, an update on teacher and principal pipeline, and a few procurement issues.
Thank you. Sorry. Just for members of the general public, those meetings are all public meetings and televised. You're welcome to attend or view online. I don't have, I don't have many comments tonight. I personally, so I do want to say, I personally was not able to make the education rally last night in Annapolis, but later that evening, I looked at it online and I saw it in the news, and as always, Baltimore showed up and was well represented. So it's really important that we continue to advocate for what we believe we deserve from the funding in Annapolis. So thanks to everybody who was able to come, to go to Annapolis last night. I also want to acknowledge two gifts. One, a gift of $3,000 worth of new and gently-used child, youth, and adult clothes for emergency school-based clothing closets at Moravia Park, Vanguard Collegiate, Furley, and Charles Carroll Barrister from Johns Hopkins University and its affiliates. And two, I want to acknowledge the gift of $6,120 towards student-staff-family support for extracurricular activities at Beachfield from TJ Distributors, Inc. Thank you very much. Just a question for Mr. Gant. It says that one appeal was removed, but there's still four on my list. Okay, my bad. I'd like to, I'm going to split these up a little bit. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the PEP agenda. Moved by Commissioner McFadden. Do I have a second? Commissioner Reed, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank Reed Berkeley. Motion passes seven-zero with two absent. I'm going to consider the appeals and hearings one by one, since there may be some, I was told there may be some questions. Appeals and hearings, 4.02, case 18-85AGR. Motion to approve, a motion to accept the hearing officer's recommendation. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Berkeley moves, second.
He said four point zero.
Yes. Case number 18-85AGR. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Is there a second? Commissioner McFadden, all in favor of approving the hearing officer recommendation. Commissioner McFadden. Commissioner Kashani, Commissioner Berkeley, all opposed to the hearing officer recommendation. Commissioner Bondima, Commissioner Chinia. Okay. So what was the first count? So there's three of us. There were three, four, two opposed, any abstentions? Abstention from Commissioner Frank, so the motion does not pass. Three support, two opposed, one abstention, and two absent. Appeals and hearings, case number 18-88APM. Do I have a motion to accept the hearing officer recommendation? Commissioner Chinia moves. Second by Commissioner Frank, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Reed Berkeley. Motion passes seven-zero with two absent. Appeals and hearings, case number 18-90ADH. Do I have a motion to approve the hearing officer recommendation? Motion made by Commissioner Bondima. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner McFadden, all in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Kashani.
I just need a second to get my mind up which way we're voting on things. I apologize. So could you just explain who you're voting to recommend?
To accept the hearing offer, so the motion was made to accept the hearing officer recommendation. So all in favor of approving that motion. Let's, I'd like to do the vote again. Motion, the motion has been made to accept the hearing officer recommendation, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Kashani, Berkeley, all opposed to the hearing officer recommendation. Commissioners Bondima, Chinia, Frank, Reed. So the motion does not pass. Two, four, three, four, four opposed, two absent. Appeals and hearings, case number 18-91AMR. Do I have a motion to accept the hearing officer recommendation? Motion made by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Reed, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Reed Berkeley. Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you, and thanks for the clarification. It can get confusing. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Santalisis for her comments.
Great. Thank you, Chair Kashani, and our full Board of School Commissioners. I would like to invite Chief Grant Skinner forward for tonight's PEP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. We have two appointments this evening, and both are here in attendance with us. First, Poppy Michelle Fahey, currently a teacher of special education at Highland Town Elementary Middle, number 237, is appointed Educational Specialist II for Specialized Instruction effective June 24. And the second, Connie Boss, currently Director of Payroll at Dunbar Armored, is appointed Director of Payroll effective March 20.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner, and I'd like to welcome both of the new additions to City Schools. Well, one who's here already, one who's new to City Schools, welcome aboard. Next, I would like to continue my comments by welcoming Keith Novak and Aris Coleman of Clifton Larson Allen, our external auditing firm. As a public entity, City Schools is subject to many, and I want to stress, many, audits, but it is important because audits demonstrate that we are good stewards of public resources in the service of the students and families we serve. Tonight, Clifton Larson Allen will report on their audit of our federal grant programs. So I want to thank both of you for joining us, and turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Novak. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, or CLA, as we like to call ourselves these days. And with me is Aris Coleman, who was the director on the job. What we'd like to do this evening is just spend a few minutes going over the single audit, which is the audit of the federal programs and the results thereof. With that, I'll turn it over to Aris.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening. As with prior years, the single audit is the second half of the 2018 audit. We were here area last year to present the results of the financial audit, and this is the second half of that same process. So we will briefly go over, go over the overview of the audit process of the federal expenditures, the reports and opinions that were issued by CLA, and then the final results of the 2018 single audit. So just kind of a little bit of background, the audit approach. The single audit acts required by the federal government in accordance with government auditing standards, and therefore, we are subject to the requirements that are set forth by the federal government, which is the Office of Budget and Management, as part of this audit process. So when we look at the expenditures, first, we divide them up into two categories. You have a Type A, which is considered the higher-risk dollar values for expenditures, and then you have Type B. Once we determine which programs are to be tested based on a risk-based approach, which is outlined by the OMB under federal guidelines, we determine the major programs for 2018 with Special Education Cluster, School Improvement Grant, which is also known as SIG, and the Supporting Effective Instruction State Grants. This was formerly known as Title II under the No Child Left Behind Act. So to continue with the audit approach, we selected three programs, and then we looked at the audit process for those three programs. City Schools qualifies as a low-risk auditee. Under the guidelines, that means that the auditor must test at least 20% of the total federal expenditures for the fiscal year. For each program selected, we have specific compliance requirements that are subject to be tested, and those two are also regulated by the federal compliance requirements. For the three programs selected for testing, I have listed here the main areas that we looked at. The allowable cost in activities, basically is how the monies were spent for the program, which is the largest portion of the program. Indirect costs, if indirect cost was charged, make sure it was charged in accordance with the allowable rate. Cash management, how were funds requested and whether requested in accordance with MSDE's requirements. Eligibility, if there are participants that received, there were participants that received benefits from the program, want to make sure they were eligible in accordance with the requirements. Matching level effort earmarking, those are requirements, if there were any monies to be set aside or used for a particular purpose, or if City Schools was required to match with their own funds for the program, we want to make sure that was done accordingly. Period of performance, the grant was actually utilized in the time that it was allowed under the grantor. Procurement suspension, debarment, that the procurement process for City Schools were in accordance with federal guidelines and that they were adhered to if there were any contracts made to vendors during this period. Reporting requirements, whatever requirements are required by the grantor, and special tests and provisions, it's just that if there were any unique tests that were required by MSDE as well as the federal government. And the reason why I'm mentioning MSDE, the Maryland State Department of Education, is because your funds are passed through to them. So as we go through this process, I mentioned that we are, we adhere to federal regulations, but because MSDE is a pass-through, pass-through grantor, they may have other requirements that we are required to be, to be a part of the process. So the reports and opinions issued, we issued internal control letter over your financial reporting. This was done as part of the CAFER and was presented when we were here to present the results of the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses noted. In relation to your federal programs, we issued an auditor's report on compliance with requirements for each major federal program, and it returned controls over compliance for those programs. There was unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we allow to give. There were, everything was in compliance, there were no compliance issues, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies noted over your major programs. Your schedule of federal awards were presented in accordance with Uniform Guidance Standards. So the final results of the single audit, kind of some numbers here. So for 2018, the total federal expenditures for the school system was about $151.5 million. The programs that were selected for testing represented $37.9 million, which is about 25% of the total federal expenditures that were spent during fiscal year '18. As I mentioned, requirement says 20%, so we, we were over that number. And then in prior years, there was a finding related to highly-qualified teachers. That requirement was under No Child Left Behind. Once No Child Left Behind was dissolved, and now you have a new requirement, that requirement for highly-qualified teachers no longer exists. So unless there is some requirement by MSDE to look at highly-qualified under auditing standards, that we are no longer subject to test that requirement. And this was also presented as part of the, the final corrective action plan for the district to MSDE. So I thank you very much for your time, and are there any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you very much for making it simple and understandable. I guess first question I have is, you said unmodified opinion. How does that differ from like unqualified opinion? It's based on the nature of the business, or?
Unmodified is the latest term of art, if you will, for opinions. It used to be unqualified, but for whatever reason, it was determined that unqualified didn't properly let people know what was really going on, so they changed it to unmodified. But they're really one in the same.
Thank you. And when's your next audit here?
The next audit will be for the year-end of June 30, 2019, which will start very shortly.
Thank you.
In fact, the process will start in about a month.
I think there's ever a time when we're not being audited.
It feels that way. I would defer to our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, is Marian in the room?
I can see you right back there.
Yes. Is there ever a time that we are not being audited? Okay.
We say that proudly.
Proudly.
Could you say again that we just got the highest rating?
Well, you've got, you've got the highest level of opinion that can be obtained.
Yeah. They just want to hear.
It makes you feel good, I know. No, the one other thing, the one other thing I will mention, you are what is considered a low-risk auditee. There are a number of criteria that have to be gone through to get a, an entity to a low-risk auditee status, and that criteria is somewhat rigorous, especially in the single audit world. One of the criteria, or actually, two of the criteria that could, that could throw you off would be if you had a material weakness in internal control or a material noncompliance in any of the last two years. So once you get on the quote-unquote "bad" list, you stay on there for two years. The difference between a low-risk auditee and what they call an other-than-low-risk auditee, and the reason for that is they felt that high-risk auditee sounded bad, is the difference between having to look at programs that cover 20% of the expenditures versus 40% of the expenditures. So basically, if you're an other-than-low-risk auditee, we're doing twice the work. The other thing to keep in mind, when we're doing this work, we're really acting more or less as an extension of the federal government, and so we're following their guidelines, their rules. And sometimes, it's a little bit more stringent than would otherwise be viewed. In other words, in the federal world, it's very binary. It's either right, or it's wrong. And sometimes, when things are wrong, you may not agree with, you know, the outcome, but that's the way they look at it. So to come away with an unmodified opinion and be a low-risk auditee is quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? We appreciate your help.
Thank you both for your work. And happy retirement. I'm actually a little surprised to see you here. I thought...
It's one year, nine months, and 19 days.
Okay.
If you want the seconds, I've got that one.
Great. Thank you again. Moving along, as we all know, meeting the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students is the core of our blueprint focus on student wholeness. In pursuit of that goal, I was privileged to serve as a member of the Council of Distinguished Educators as part of the work of the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development at the Aspen Institute, one of our valuable thought partners in this work. Tonight, I am very pleased to welcome Mr. Chris Harried, who is serving as a commissioner on the Aspen Institute National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development. What makes me proudest is Chris not only attended far more meetings than I did and was very heavily involved in the final product, but Chris is a graduate of Baltimore City's own Vivian T. Thomas Medical Arts Academy. He is a former student commissioner. He is a graduate of UMBC, and a special education teacher at City Neighbors High School. He has a passion for education and youth engagement, which has led him to serve as Special Assistant for Education and Youth Initiatives with the Mayor's Office of Baltimore City, as well as numerous roles with the Y of Central Maryland. Tonight, Chris will give us an overview of the work that has been done at the Aspen Institute in this critical area that is facing not only Baltimore City Schools, but also the nation. Please welcome our very own Mr. Chris Harried.
Yeah, I can't forget the mic. Well, good evening, Madam's Chair and Vice Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Santalisis. I am Chris J. Harried, and I have the privilege of serving as a special educator here with City Schools. This evening, I'll be sharing some snippets of the work my colleagues and I on the Aspen Institute's National Commission for Social, Emotional, and Academic Development have completed. The past two years of our efforts recently culminated with this report, this very long, very wordy, but good, report, From a Nation at Risk to a Nation at Hope. All right, here we go. So the, this commission that we served on was comprised of about 100 leaders from a variety of different industries and professions that all impacted education or were impacted by it. As shown on the slide, some of these fields included business, healthcare, and the military. I'd also like to highlight the time spent on ensuring that both student and parent voices were adequately sought after and included in this work. The commission's charge was to engage and energize communities in re-envisioning learning to encompass the social, emotional, and academic dimensions so that all children can succeed in school, work, and life. We spent time traveling across the country on a deep listening tour. During this time, we were able to interact with a litany of stakeholders, starting with our primary beneficiaries, students, ranging all the way to school, district, and community leaders. From that listening tour, we sought to develop recommendations and suggestions for implementation of a social and emotional learning, not even curriculum, but approach that spans the pre-K through 12th landscape. All right. So this is a diagram of our commission team. I'm wanting to collect my notes here. As previously stated, our commission was made up of many individuals that were contributing in a variety of ways. In the center, does it have the pointer? Yeah. All right, in the center, we have our 20-plus or so commissioners who spent time seeking input and feedback from practitioners and policymakers while learning more about the different models of social and emotional learning all across the country. So we traveled to Austin, Texas, Tacoma, Washington, Cleveland, and we got an idea as to how different school districts are engaging in this work and how it looks in their respective classrooms. That work was reinforced in no small part through our Partners Collaborative, who helped us to understand the current configuration of social and emotional learning, and our funders collaborative, who paid the bills for all those trips. Adding to our insights were the Council of Distinguished Scientists, the Council of Distinguished... Distinguished Educators, on which we were so very enthused to have Dr. Brooke and Santalisis serve, the Aspen Institute's Youth Commission, where I spent the primary bulk of my time working with young people to get the idea as to what we thought our classroom should look like. And it's kind of weird to still be clustered in with the young people, but hey, I'll take it. In our work, we identified three engines of change through which we could realize the incredible dividends that social and emotional learning can provide. So we decided to approach this work from a practice standpoint, as teachers and leaders, a policy standpoint, as policymakers and legislators, and research. So we're talking about our academics, our folks who are at our country's leading universities and schools of education, preparing our next generation of educators, like me. Our model sees research and policy as an enabler of effective practice. So we're looking at an integration between those folks who are leading in the classrooms and those folks who are supporting them with research-based practices from, you know, schools of education and our universities. So this model here is very simple. It's a diagram of simply how we decided to model our pursuits with respect to emphasizing that our focus was on students, right? This is the concentric model there in the middle there. We started with students, and we built out from there. This was the element that we strive to ensure is paramount. And so even when I was in the room with a lot of very important folks who had, you know, their careers were my lifespan, it was important to emphasize that we start with students, we come back to students, and we include them in all of our conversations. How we operated, as we engaged in this work, it was important for us to model the behaviors and strategies that we hoped to realize in the students for whom we were advocating. That mission started with us taking the time to emphasize that there was no emphasis on ideologies or partisanship, because we had folks from all walks of life, but a focus on the core mission of the commission, right, which was how does learning happen, and then how can we make that experience better for students across the country. From there, we sought to develop an integrative collaborative atmosphere that brought together members of the practitioner, research, and policymaker arenas. All of those actions formed the foundation of our work, being centered on becoming a grassroots movement, and made great strides to foster consensus among diverse coalitions. So if you look at the slides here, we talk about that neutral convening space, right, breaking down traditional silos, so there's no interruption in the relaying of communication between researchers, and scientists, and educators, and most importantly, our students and their families. And then placing the emphasis on being, again, a grassroots movement. We wanted to make sure that this wasn't the next fad in education, that we were able to bring forth authentic buy-in from teachers, parents, and students, and so that's why it was so important for them to be at the table as we brought forth these recommendations. These documents here represent the consensus forged by many different groups of stakeholders that we came together to answer some difficult questions. On the top left, you'll see the interim report that we published about a year ago, that placed emphasis on the question of how does learning happen, right? What does that look like? What is that experience like from a teacher and a student perspective? Second, from the bottom right, is a document very near and dear to my heart, all the edits that we had to go through from there. That's the Youth Call to Action. So the Youth Commission put out, this is what we think school should look like, right? This is what our experience has been, and this is what we said authentic, social and emotional learning-based experiences would look like. So it was important for us to highlight the youth perspective and voice in this dialogue as we sought to improve the educational experience by speaking to students and making sure that, again, we centered their perspectives. So about two months ago, we unveiled the final report that we put together, From a Nation at Risk to a Nation at Hope. Our website is nationathope.org. That's where you can find all the information that I'm speaking on today. We, you know, brought together all of our commissioners, all the members of our various councils, and partners, and collaborators, to essentially publish this report and to get the work started in terms of how we are going to move forward with implementing our grassroots movement. And while our commission does sunset as of Thursday, we are excited to have this work done and to begin engaging partners like the Special Olympics and America's Promise to push our work into the next stages. Really quickly, this is the real meat and potatoes of our work. So this is the overview of our final report. These are six major takeaways that we all came together with and are emphasizing in our work. The first one was set a clear vision that broadens the definition of student success to prioritize the whole child. Second, to that is transforming learning settings so that they are safe and supportive for all young people. Third was change instruction to teach students explicitly social, emotional, and cognitive skills, and embedding these skills in academics and in school-wide practices. Fourth one was making sure that we build adult expertise in child development. We wanted to make sure we aligned our resources and leverage partners in the community to address the whole child. When we talk about what does it really mean to be a community-based school and to engage our students and where they are, it's important that we bring in our community partners and work with them to provide the services and experiences that our students need. And we're looking to forge closer connections between research and practice by shifting the paradigm for how research gets done. So just really quickly, there are two points on there that I definitely wanted to make sure I emphasized, as they were very near and dear to my heart. The first one was setting a clear vision, and we know that setting a clear vision begins with giving deliberate thought to what social, emotional, and academic knowledge and skills are needed by high school students to be prepared for post-secondary endeavors. This is a notion that Dr. Santalisis articulates very succinctly in her Forward for the Blueprint for Success, this document that you all put together, that we actually looked over during my time on the commission, in terms of, you know, what different school districts were doing and how that work contributed to the environment that we were looking at. So our attention will have to be turned towards an intentional emphasis on investing in the development and growth of the whole child. Our report calls for broadening the definitions of a successful high school graduate to include cognitive and social and emotional skills and competencies. We need to have students who, of course, are literate in the English language, but we also need to graduate students who are literate in the language of humanity as well. I'm encouraged by the great potential that City Schools has exuded in formalizing an approach to addressing the needs of the whole child with this Blueprint for Success document. All right. The second one, last one, I promise, is the transformation of learning spaces. The transformation of learning spaces is rooted in the idea that we can build settings that are physically and emotionally safe for students while fostering strong bonds among children and adults. One of the principal methods by which we enact transformation is by creating school-wide cultures that encourage voice and agency for students. By extending to students the opportunity to participate in the decision-making process at their schools, they can be empowered to contribute to an environment where they feel that, you know, that's where they want to be. I think back to my time as a student, sitting here six years ago, as a member of ASCBC and the SGA at my school, you know, we had a presence in our school district where our leaders knew who we were, and they knew who, you know, we had a relationship where we could go and talk to our superintendent, our chief academic officer, and engage in the conversations that were needed on behalf of our constituents, our fellow students. And so when we talk about having those settings where students feel safe and supported, it's more of an emphasis on making sure that we give them space for their voice and we support them as well. And as we talk about preparing students for what's next beyond high school or, you know, in the work world, being able to advocate for yourself is one of the most invaluable skills that I feel that I learned in this very room, amongst this very body, within ASCBC. So being able to speak life to power in terms of, you know, these are my needs, right? This is how I learn best, and this is how you can help me be successful. I think that every student in our school district deserves that opportunity, and we can definitely work together to figure out how we can get them there. These are our final reports. So we have, again, the practical-based document, practice, the policy, and the research agendas that are all there. They all work together in tandem to push into the final report. So if you, you know, you're a person who likes the numbers, and you want to talk about the research, we've got a document for you. If you are definitely a policy wonk like myself, you want to figure out the nuts and bolts, we got a document for you. And if you're a teacher, if you're someone who's, you know, on the front lines, we've got a practice-based document for you that we definitely would like you to review. So in conclusion, these are just some of our snapshots here from some of our visits all across the country. And the top right there, that is me and some of my colleagues on the Youth Commission, students from all across the Baltimore, Washington metropolitan area. And the bottom right there was a site visit from a brand-new state-of-the-art STEM high school in Tacoma, Washington. Of course, it wasn't Vivian T. Thomas, so, you know, it was okay. And then there, we were greeted by some members of the marching band from a local school in Austin. And then the top left was an experience that was very near and dear to my heart. We visited an elementary school where students were so well-versed and knowledgeable about the social and emotional learning practices that I had to sit and take notes. So it was a wonderful learning experience. I want to thank Dr. Santalisis and members of the board for allowing me to speak on our work here at Aspen, and we're looking forward to working together in the future. Thank you.
Just awesome.
Thank you. Thanks so much for presenting. And again, I just want to say it was wonderful to be part of a national body of work and see one of our own graduates leading in that space in such a really impactful way. He had a bigger following, I think, than most of the adults there, and actually introduced me to some new folks. So Mr. Harried represented Baltimore City and himself, clearly, incredibly well. So thank you again, Chris. Last night, I had the privilege of joining more than 8,000 teachers, school support personnel, parents, community members, students, education advocates, at what was really a historic rally to advocate for more funding for, frankly, education across the state. I want to thank Commissioner Sassan and Commissioner McFadden for joining us, also, Commissioner Lynn for being there as well. We were well-represented. I saw large numbers of folks from Baltimore City as well as across the state. And really, there is no issue we face that is more critical at this particular time in really achieving full educational equity than to give our students here in Baltimore City and across the state access to high-quality education that prepares them for success really throughout their lives. And while funding does not, you know, if funding is not a silver bullet response to everything that we need to do and should be doing on behalf of our young people, I will say that this need is absolutely glaring, and it is, in fact, a priority around which other priorities ultimately are grounded. When I grew up, my grandparents and parents taught me that if you open your checkbook, you can see where a family's priorities lie. I think the same is true when we look at school district budgets and when we look at state budgets. And so part of what was so important about the rally and what was so invigorating was seeing large numbers of people who were pouring out to say, we want a priority to be the education of the next generation across this state. We actually know the data. We've read the reports. We know our schools are being short-changed by billions of dollars because we, here in Baltimore City in particular, are living it every day. The issue before us really comes down to a question of equity. And while we know a lot of this, and we have been living it, I can't say enough that both at a national level, as well as at a local level, we have studies that are showing continually that nearly half of Maryland's African-American or Latino students attend schools in one of the three most underfunded districts in the state. We have national studies that show Maryland is one of six states where the wealthiest 25% of school districts receive more money than the poorest. We also know that despite the fact that Maryland is one of the wealthiest states in the United States of America, 53% of Black students attend chronically underfunded schools compared to just 8% of white students in Maryland. Providing the resources to properly educate all of our children is an investment in the future prosperity of our society. But more importantly, it is an imperative that is both economic and moral, and it is a fulfillment of the promises that have been long unkept in the foundational principles of our country. This year's Kerwin Bill represents a first step, and I reiterate, a first step. But we must commit ourselves to continuing this struggle until the concept of equity actually becomes a reality of equity that we can identify with the actual distribution of resources in support of the education of all children, every family's child within our state. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you, Board of Commissioners and Board Chair Kashani.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. At this time, I'd like to do a review of the consent agenda items to see if there's anything anybody wants to have pulled. If you want to pull it, we'll come back to this list after general public comment to see if there's any additional items. First items are the 8.01, the Operator Renewal for Independence. We're going to pull that for presentation. Item 8.02, Charter Application Update for Baltimore Latin School, we're going to pull that for presentation. So the first item that is scheduled to go by consent is item 8.03, the Waiver Request, Hampstead Hill Academy.
I would like to pull that.
All right. We're going to pull that. Can you say what your question is so we can be prepared?
Yes, ma'am. I have four questions. My first question is there, sorry, no, three questions, sorry. How would the school, as well as the catering company, be attentive into making sure that no alcohol is left behind? That might also go into contrast with the custodial business. And also, would this be on a weekday? And if so, how would we ensure that no alcohol or any bingo or any gambling materials will not be left behind within the area that this event will be hosted? That will be all.
Okay. So I'll assume that there'll be somebody either from the school or somebody will be here to respond to those questions. Is anybody here from Hampstead Hill?
I don't think anybody's here from Hampstead Hill. We potentially have a staff member, a board member.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. We won't come back to it till later in the agenda. Okay, next item, item 13.01, Ready Refresh by Nestle. Item 14.01, The Management Center. Item 14.02, Baltimore Teachers Union. Item 14.03, Robert Half International, Inc. Item 15.01, Catapult Learning, Inc. We're going to pull item 15.01. Can you share what your questions are?
It's a lot of money. I'd like to learn more.
Okay. So we'll come back to that, and we'll just ask staff responsible for that item just to make a general presentation so that because of the scale and size of the request, we're members of the board and members of the general public are just more knowledgeable about that item. Item, nope, that's it. So we'll come back to this, but right now, we're going to pull item 8.03 and item 15.01. We'll review the list after general public comment. Okay?
There's also 801 and 802.
Well, we're going to pull those for presentation, sorry. Thanks. Okay. With that, we'll start with groups that are especially recognized and have a little extra time. Our first guest is Clifton Denby, I believe, from the BTU. I believe you're going to be joined by Brandy Boone West.
Yes, sir.
Okay, terrific. Evening.
For the Baltimore Teachers Union?
My name is Brandy Boone West. We're a spare school, parent educator, special ed.
And we would like to speak on a concern involving the second formal observation. For an example, if the principal does the first observation, someone other is to complete the second. I have copied additional information pertaining to the second formal observation procedures or outlines from the city school insiders. On that page, it states that two different qualified observers complete the different qualified observers complete the first and second observation. The BTU has received a number of calls concerning the procedure and who is supposed to complete the second observation. When I brought this to the attention of Human Capital, I was told that this does not mean that the first principal cannot do both because it is just best practices. So we are in the business of not doing best practices? The reason why this is a concern is that with some principals who hold grudges, lack integrity, and just have a personal dislike for an employee, they cannot objectively score the individual. By telling me that this is best practices and not something that is usually done is unfair to the teacher who is being observed. If this is best practices, but it's not being done, then you can't say it's best practice. So my concern is, I would like to see best practices being done. If this is what it's supposed, if it's, if this is what it's supposed to be done, then do it.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just say again what the document is that you're reading from? Because when you read the document, it sounded like there needed to be two people reviewing.
The actual documentation that I have is from the City School Insiders. I printed it off if you would like a copy of it.
I would, actually. So you're, so is Human Capital saying that best practice is to have two different people do it or to have the principal do both?
Have the principal do both. It doesn't matter.
Okay, so if Human Capital, so City Schools Insider is saying, was just an article in a newsletter?
No, it says, it's concerning, it says, it's outlined, "Second Formal Observation for BTU Employees."
What is this document? Okay, but I just want to make sure I understand. You want us to follow best practices and the Human Capital is saying that best practices are to have the principal do both observations, but you also don't want us to have the principal do both observations. So do you want us to follow what Human Capital is saying are best practices or?
I want you to, I want them to follow this.
You want us to follow this. Okay. That's what I was confused because you, so when you referred to best practices that you want us to do, you're referring to this.
To this form.
Not best practices according to Human Capital.
That is correct, ma'am.
I need to be more knowledgeable about exactly what this is.
So would you like that now? Or would you, do you want that now from BTU? Or when you say you want to be knowledgeable, do you want additional information forwarded to the board?
What's most appropriate? Because I think, I don't know that this is something to, this is, it sounds like an issue to be resolved. I don't know that this needs to be the place that's resolved unless it's a simple, it would be easier for, I think for the board to ask Human Capital to resolve this because it sounds like there's some, it seems like there's some inconsistency.
So if you, if you'd like, if you would like staff to follow up with kind of a full memo, we can do that. Or do you want to just go now?
Yes, please. Yes, please. Yeah, I want to do what was best for him. I don't want.
Hi. First, I would say, we have recognized that it would be helpful for us to outline all of the policies or all of the practices with respect to employee evaluations in a board policy, and that's on the calendar with the board later this year to make sure that there is even more clarity. I will say this, there are pros and cons to having multiple observers or the same observer. What is in place is if a teacher's first observation is rated low enough that it looks like they could end up with an ineffective evaluation based on that, then the second observation does have to be completed by a different observer to ensure that it's not an individual, one individual who can, whose observations can result in an ineffective evaluation.
Okay, that's very helpful. And I think that having the policy is a good idea because obviously the BTU would have input to that policy and so we can all be on the same page. Is the contract silent on this? I should be, I definitely should be knowledgeable about that, but that's a detail I just haven't held in my head. Can you?
Yeah. The collective bargaining agreement does not get into this level of detail for evaluations, and that's typical of all of our collective bargaining agreements and those in other districts too.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, you've raised it, thank you. And given that there's pros and cons, it'll be for the policy committee to chew over with appropriate public input, including from the BTU, I assume.
Correct.
Okay, terrific.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, was there any other questions? I know, I think I jumped and got to Ronald's question.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Our next guest is Yassin Toray from the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City.
Good evening. My name is Yassin Toray, and I'm the Chief of Staff for ASCBC.
Ms. Toray, Ms. Toray, yes, you can speak up just a little bit.
Good evening. My name is Yassin Toray, and I'm the Chief of Staff for ASCBC. Today, I'll be updating you all on all of our upcoming events. And so last night, ASCBC took 30 students from across Baltimore City to Annapolis to participate in the March for Our Schools Riot. Thank you to the support of the school board for providing buses and supporting our students. All of the pictures of the riot will be on the ASCB Twitter page, @BaltimoreCityASCBC. We are pleased to report that we will be taking 74 students leaders from across Baltimore City to the Mass Ocean City Conference, March 27 through March 29. These students come from 19 schools in the grade range of 6th grade to 12th grade. Students will benefit from guest speakers, leadership workshops, and other training to enhance our students' leadership skills. This will be the third-largest delegation from across All of the schools who want to, all of the schools are part of ASCBC who would like to attend the Ocean City trip must, must attend the General Assembly on Thursday, March Moving forward, on Thursday, March 14, students will be able to apply for the school year of 2019-2020 elections, which will be held in March, I mean, in May. ASCBC budget proposals is in the process of being finished and will be ready by next
Questions for Ms. Toray? Thanks. We appreciate that you came because we, it's useful for us to get regular updates from ASCBC.
I do have one question. How many more students are attending that statewide conference this year as compared to last year? Because I know you all came and requested additional support. So were you able to actually get more students? Is it around the same level?
We have extra students from this year than we did last year, and we're, and there are other schools who would like to be a part of ASCBC next school year too.
Good, good. Well, make sure you let us know.
Just to clarify a little bit, so last year, we had about, this year, I believe we have about like 19 schools. Don't quote me on that, but we've doubled our attendance 100%. So we had last year about 35 to 50 students around that area. So it's been, it's been increasing rapidly. This year, we've only been able to take three per school. So that's why it's not in entirely 100% of attendance. But we have been getting attendance, and we do have some schools that are willing to enter next year, but it's just because of the deadlines that they aren't able to make it. But next year, where our goal is to have about at least 30 schools, we already have some that are interested.
Great. I would just ask that you keep both staff and the board updated about the kind of the growing participation and if the need for additional support arises in order to ensure that an increased number of young people can attend. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so nobody else signed up for the special recognized group, so I'd like to transition to the general public comment. Our first guest is Kimberly Mooney.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Mooney. I'm here from the Roland Park Elementary Middle GSA. This is Eli McBride, and I am going to let her speak for us.
Good evening. I'm Eli McBride, a 4th grader at RPEMS. First, I would like to tell you something I believe, and that is that equal rights for everyone, including animals, is very important. I also want to remind you that I have spoken to the board before. Two years ago, I came to this board to request a policy to protect the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming kids. I have to be honest, I don't know what took you so long, but I am glad we are here now and you are finally making some progress. I am a transgender kid, and I think that Baltimore City needs to have a very clear policy. No one in a Baltimore City school should be able to discriminate against or bully anyone who is trans or gender nonconforming, like my friend Lila. The Constitution clearly states that all people have the right to liberty. Allowing bullying or discriminating against people just being, just for being themselves would be unconstitutional and just plain wrong. Being transgender isn't easy. Walking into a room full of your classmates to announce that you are trans isn't easy. And when I announced it to my classmates, some of them didn't believe me or understand. Being trans takes determination, and you need good support. It took a whole year to get my teachers and school administrators to understand and to help explain to everyone else about my identity. I'm lucky. People at my school are pretty accepting and supportive. But I have faced some teasing and some discrimination from a few students. When that happened, we had, had a meeting with them and their parents and the school psychologist to talk about it. It wasn't so bad. My mommy made cookies and they apologized. I want to make sure that every principal and every teacher in this district knows what transgender or gender nonconforming means, how to support trans and gender nonconforming kids. Please pass this policy and make our schools a safe and happy place for everyone.
Any questions for Eli? Thank you very much and thank you. Commissioner McFadden?
How are you? You did a great job tonight, and I appreciate you coming to advocate not just for yourself, but for other students throughout, not just throughout Baltimore City, but everywhere. What are you doing? You said you want to make sure that every principal knows and that we pass this policy. Tell me some of the things, tell us some of the things that you are doing besides coming to the meeting tonight.
Well, whenever I see some of my classmates being bullied, I always stick up for them, plus I'm in the GSA at my school.
Okay, good. That's good. Thank you.
And thank you to you, Ms. Mooney, for the support. Our next guest is Keisha Goodwin.
and grading. The district is currently going through policy initiatives which will impact the outcomes for students. It is the job of the district to prepare our students for the 21st century. How is this happening with the proposed computer science curriculum, which doesn't have certain components such as keyboarding, Microsoft Word, or Google Docs? Also, programming robots. If this school board is really serious about coding, schools would be transforming from computer labs to coding labs, like Mount Royal has done. If the school board was very serious about preparing our students for career in college, students would have one-on-one technology with certified teachers. Where and how are traditional schools expected to sustain a rigorous program? Within inadequate funding formula, schools will not be able to replace or repair technology, sustain engaging trips to the aquarium, purchase resources for dissecting, as the science curriculum expresses. With these things in mind, I want us to also think about how high school students already purchase their own novels per quarter for English Language Arts. They also purchase graphic calculators. They have to pay for uniforms, equipment for sports, and whatever else is needed for extracurricular activities. A 9th grader from Benjamin Franklin told me that he doesn't have any books in his school. And when he goes to the computer lab, they only have three working computers. So I will be visiting that school. But while we're thinking about rigorous, I handed out a document, a chart, from the book that says rigor is not a four-letter word. That four-letter word is hard. I want us to pay attention to, number one, where it says hard, learners avoid the task. When it's rigorous, learners embrace rigorous tasks. Number two, hard, the goal is the same for everyone, no matter what their starting place is. But under rigorous, the goal changes, and learners achieve small successes. With each success, a new goal is set. Also, look at number six. Under hard, it says learners are frustrated because they lack tools and strategies to access the task. Under rigorous, learners are empowered because they have tools and strategies to access the task. Number eight, under hard, learners don't see a need for the task because it has no immediate relevance to their life. Under rigor, learners recognize a need for the learning and see a purpose for the work. And number nine, under hard, compliance takes place because the performance of the task is done for someone else. Under rigorous, engagement takes place because the learning is for the individual. On the back, it also talks about grading. And although I may not be in complete agreement about the grading that they recommend.
Keisha.
I want us to look at, yes, number two, and also number seven. Eliminate zeros and that the grading system changes from zeros or failing grade to I's. And that no matter what, if you can retake a test, you should be able to redo homework, classwork, and some other things to promote the student.
Just a quick question for Chief Connolly. As, I remember when we did the ELA curriculum, there was extensive review. People had a lot of input. If somebody, if Keisha, for example, has ideas, how does that make its way into the process? At least for consideration?
For anything that we bring in front of the board, we go through a rigorous process of making sure that we get community input.
That's what I thought. I didn't want to imply that you didn't. I just wanted to raise it for this.
Absolutely. And I would say, A, that's a great book. I used that as a book study with my school back when I was a principal. And we do- And we do have coding, the keyboarding skills embedded into our coding, the things that we do with our students and with our teachers. But a lot of the other things, I just want to make sure that you know, or I'm sure you know who Stacy Davis is in the back, and she can help you in answering those questions. And if not, we'll work to get those answers for you.
I would also just add to Chief Connolly that at any point when there are schools that are not providing young people with the learning materials that are part of the curriculum, you, as well as other parents, should first flag it for the school leader. And then, if you are not seeing movement in that area, then you should see Chief Davis. You can certainly follow up on that.
Thank you. I do not have a student at Benjamin Franklin, but.
But because you've said it, I just wanted to make that publicly, that if, you know, because I meet, sometimes meet people in the grocery store who will tell me, you know, I don't have a textbook for this, that, or the other. And I just, because you were good enough to trigger that for me, I wanted to remind the public that that's the course they should follow, because young people should have the materials they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keisha. Our next guest is Nicole McCann.
Good evening, Chair Kishani, Dr. Santalisis, and members of the board. My name is Nicole McCann, and I am with the ACLU of Maryland. I am here tonight because transgender and gender nonconforming children deserve the right to be themselves, be treated with dignity, and be treated, or be protected from discrimination. The ACLU strongly supports the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming students to be supported and accommodated by their schools. We've legally defended the rights of transgender students in Frederick and Talbot Counties, where local school boards were forced by the courts to protect them, as they should. These policies include transgender students as equal members of the school community while still protecting the privacy of all students. The ACLU supports Proposed Policy JBB and asks that the board votes to adopt it as soon as possible. Having a local protection policy in place not only helps set an example, but also makes it easier for trans and gender nonconforming children and their families to turn to for support if they experience discrimination. Proposed Policy JBB will give students and their families the opportunity to defend themselves against any shameful attempts to isolate and stigmatize them. Schools have a duty to ensure that all students can learn in a welcoming and harassment-free environment, including transgender students, who are especially vulnerable to harassment and discrimination. Hundreds of school districts around the country allow these students to use facilities based on who they are. Additionally, we are encouraged by included guidance in Proposed Policy JBB for the use of pronouns and names, dress codes, access to gender segregated facilities, athletics and physical education, student records, and requesting a name or gender change. In a recent Baltimore Sun article, Kimberly Mooney, who was up first? Roland Park Elementary Middle Gay-Straigh Alliance Advisor, said it well. The policy is really needed now, right now, and if the federal government won't protect them, we need to step up and do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Ayanna McLean.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Ayanna McLean, Principal of Independence School Local One. This is my community. I, first of all, would like to extend my gratitude to the school board for the recommendation in favor of Independence remaining open an additional two years. As a, it is without question that there remains a great deal of work to be done. And as a collective unit, the operator, staff, parents, students, the community, and myself are committed to strengthening our academic program and ensuring the best for our students. Again, I'd like to thank you for finding value in our program and our students' needs.
Terrific. Now, when, there's a point not too far from now where we're going to have the presentation, and I, are you going to stay? Because I do have a question to ask you then. I'll wait till that part of the.
Oh, okay.
It seems more appropriate for that. Does any, you have some time? Does anybody else have anything they want to say on behalf of the school?
She's on the list as well, so that might be her.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, we've got Mr. Etheridge, Mr. Plummer.
That's us. We have time to Mr. McLeod, if that's okay.
Go for it, because I've got a bunch of you on here, and I think that you're, that you're all there, so. If you could say your name before you speak, because I'll keep track of it on here. So we'll restart the three-minute clock, please.
Good evening, Dr. Santalisis and the board. My name is Jessica McLeod. I am currently an assistant principal who serves our district with pride. I am a part of the Charter Network of Baltimore Teacher Network, and I am going to be supporting Independence High School academically with culture and climate, just to make sure that we meet all of the expectations that you all have presented before us. And I'm there to support the students, and I'm also there to support Principal McLean and the organization as I need to.
My name is Adriana Salazar, and I attend Independence. I just want to thank you guys for giving us another chance and believing in us. We're going to do the best that we can. We're ready for next year, and I have an opportunity because the mayor offered me an internship, so I will be working with her this summer, and that's going to be a big experience for me. And once again, I just want to thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Prashana Castle. I just wanted to thank you guys for believing in us, because, well, it's pretty hard, because despite last year. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, my God, I can't, I can't stress it enough. Thank you for believing in Black kids who are depicted as not the best. We don't get the best treatment in the city schools. And thank you, oh, my God, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Who else?
We have one parent.
Herbert, is that?
Hi, my name is Herbert Lindlaw, and I'm a parent of a student at Independence, and I just wanted to say thank you, guys, thank the board. And, you know, my son would be lost if it wasn't for Independence. You know, he's, he struggles a little bit, and this, he's been motivated by these people. And I just want to thank you. This is kind of a practice run for me, because he's only a freshman, and I believe we'll be back in two years to get additional funding, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Santalisis. I come this evening to support Independence, and thank you again, Dr. Santalisis, for your confidence in the school. I'm sure that you will see in this coming two years, if the board, if it's the board's pleasure, I believe you will see that the school has turned around 100%. I do want to raise two other issues with the board. One, I didn't know, I was sitting in the audience, I didn't know that you were going to get a presentation about your audit. You all received that audit so calmly, and I was sitting in the back like, yay, 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 because I've gone through five, five audits, good, clean audits, and when I heard that, I was excited for you, so congratulations. I think it speaks volumes to Dr. Santalisis' stewardship over our funds. But I am concerned about one thing, and that is, I saw today President Trump's FY20 budget. In his FY20 budget, there is an increase in military spending, but whopping cuts in every department, including education. And I just want to give you a heads up about that. I think some of the programs that the auditors talked about tonight will be impacted by those cuts, and we need to be prepared to lift our voice to that. So, again, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Mr. Plummer?
No, you have my time.
Oh, you yielded.
We're trying to streamline the.
You have succeeded, actually. Yes, you can.
So, one of the things I just want to say to the young people that are here, I want you to know that it is never about you or your potential. And I want to be real clear about that. You are young, you are gifted, and many of you are Black. This is never about you. It is about us, it is about adults, it is about our ability to serve you in the way that your giftedness demands. And so, the reason why the school is staying open is because you have a team of adults who are willing to put their best behind you and hold their work on your behalf up to scrutiny from a real tough CEO and board. But I want you to know, and I want to be clear, this is never, ever, ever about your worth. It is about whether we give you what you deserve. So I just wanted to clarify that, so you don't walk away with any question about what this is.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for all the work you put into this, because we know how much it was. So, most of the speakers were here from Independence, and they just breezed right through that. So our final general public speaker is Elaine Joliker? I don't know if I said the last name, I'm sorry. And Christian, is Shontae coming back?
Yeah.
Okay, because this is the last one. Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. I'd like to say thank you for your time and your partnership to making this happen. My name is Alangelique Coeur, and I have spent the past few years here working in our school with our young people in City School. I'm a transplant from Miami-Dade County Public School, and I'm happy and proud to call Baltimore City home. Now, with that being said, I have seen over the years how far Baltimore City has come on the journey in making all of our schools safe, welcoming and affirming for all of our students. I sent proudly with you tonight and youth across the city to demand safety for all. I am the co-chair of the Baltimore City LGBTQ Commission with the mayor's office. We have an opportunity tonight, after three years of advocacy, to send a strong message to our school, our parents, our communities, to test our need, and for the rest of Maryland and our country, to say that all students in Baltimore will be afforded an opportunity to achieve. We truly mean all students. We know this policy is not all it will take. It will take community education, training, and tough conversations. And I want to emphasize this tough conversation because we understand both short-term and long-term benefit. The safety and protection of trans students have a deep impact on students' achievement. Moreover, we are your partner in this work. We believe this policy is not the end, but the beginning of some of the most crucial work in education today. When we talk about social and emotional wellness of students, we must affirm those who happen to be different from the rest of us. Helping students feel prideful in themselves so that they can, prideful in their learning, and for us to shift this culture. Baltimore City can become a beacon for the rest of other districts in this country by passing this policy. So I urge you an affirmative vote on this policy. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for speaking. Obviously, we'll come to this at the end of the, towards the end of the meeting under presentations, and we'll be talking more about the policy, so, but we appreciate your input and your help. Thank you. Is that me? Not just yet. Who is that? We're going to go back to the, we have one special recognized group that I missed, apologize, ladies. So Julianne Kelly and Shontae Guy from PCAB would like to speak with us.
As you all come, I just want to give a big thank you to Shontae Guy for allowing her story and her family's story to be featured powerfully. You know, I know sometimes the end result of a lot of writing is not what we want it to be. Knowing you, you have critiques over what the final product was, but I will say, when I began the New York Times article, reading it today, I held my breath. And when I saw your name and your family's name, I let out a deep breath, and I said, I cannot think of a better parent or a better Baltimore City voice to represent our city and our young people. So again, knowing you, you've got issues with some parts of the final piece, but I want you to know that I was incredibly proud to say that I know you and that you are part of our city and our school system. So thank you.
Thank you. So, just thank you for letting us speak here. Shontae is our treasure, fearless treasure, as she has to fight all of our battles when it comes to money. And so that's what we're here today to discuss. Shontae?
Thanks, Julianne. Thank you, Commissioner Kishani, Dr. Santalisis, and commissioners. I come before you tonight unprepared with written documentation racing up from downtown to get here, so thank you for calling us at the end of the session. We have recently become aware of potential budget cuts that would impact the Parent and Community Advisory Board, and it's for that reason that we are sitting here with you tonight. I know that at the last board meeting, you all took receipt of PCAB's progress report. So I want to highlight a couple of things from that progress report. The first is PCAB's mission statement that we came up with this academic year. Our mission is to ensure that the voices of parents and community members are heard, influential, and demonstrate equity and inclusion in the development and implementation of policies and procedures for the benefit of all students attending Baltimore City public schools. With that in mind, we want to be really transparent in sharing with you all that while PCAB has existed for a very long time as a result of a state statute that was implemented, we do believe, this executive committee this year does believe that academic year 1819 is a foundational year for us, that we are rebranding ourself, that we are recommitting ourself to the parents, to the community, to the students that attend Baltimore City public schools. As such, we've done a lot of work to pour that foundation. Each of the executive committee members has adopted five schools each to go out and have conversations with those parent and teacher organizations so that they know that they have advocates, so that they know that their voices are going to be heard and that we are going to represent those voices on their behalf. We also want you to know that we face some administrative challenges associated with the work that we were looking to do this year. And so, as you consider what budgetary adjustments you'll be making next year that will potentially impact PCAB, here are a few of our notable measurable impacts this year. We've increased our social media followers and our engagement level by 41% over the academic year last year. There are more parents attending Parent and Community Advisory Board public meetings and engaging in open conversations. It is because of PCAB's engagement that this board got to hear the voices of parents and community members associated with school resource officers being armed in schools. We brought those parent voices forward. We are under the impression that if our budget is to be cut going into next academic year, that it's likely to be cut by 35%. PCAB already doesn't get a lot of money as it is. And so, we'd like to invite the board, we'd like to invite whoever else is interested in having a conversation with us about, to learn more about what we're budgeting our dollars for, what the impact is of those dollars, and to just have some really transparent and candid conversations about brainstorming ideas that get us at least the budget that we got coming into this year, if not more, which is what we were hoping for next year. We expect to ramp up our engagement protocols next year, given that we'll be out of the foundational phases. Julianne and I are happy to take any questions and are interested in the board's thoughts about grant writing. If additional board dollars aren't on the table. If additional board dollars aren't on the table, just any, any ideas that we believe are viable ideas that would help us to continue to support parents in the community in Baltimore City, as well as our students. Thank you.
So, thanks for coming to talk to us. The, we were asked to cut a pretty significant amount from the board office budget. So, yeah, I don't, so, yes, we can take a look at it. I know it's imminent that it's due, but I'm seeing Christian huddling with Chief of Staff Perkins Cohen. It's unlikely that it could be an increase. I don't think anybody's getting, you're looking at me. Can you say something to help me? Yeah, Allison, to help me, thanks.
I just think this is something the board should talk about. It's within the board budget.
Yeah. I just thought you were trying to say something to me.
Yeah, so I just think you guys should just have a follow-up meeting afterwards to talk about how it fits in with other priorities within the board budget.
Yeah.
It's a board decision.
It is. I just thought you were trying to say something, and I didn't want to stifle that. Christian, do you want to say something now, or do we?
No, we're going to continue to have conversations about it. And we can, like I said, look at maybe moving some other things around.
Okay. So, I would say that if people, the time is short on this. If people, if you can stay afterwards a few minutes, we can talk about this a little bit. Anybody that can stay? Yes, go ahead.
Do we get, do we get a proposed budget from P-CAB? Do they submit that to us in the development of the board office budget?
I don't think it's-
Or is it just something that we?
We get, we get an amount, the board office gets an amount from the budget people. So, we started with a significant reduction. So, I don't know, you can answer your part now.
No, in the past, we haven't provided a budget, which we'd be more than willing to do so that you could see why we're saying we need the budget that we're asking for.
Right, to the chair of women's, to the chair of women's point, we've been given a fixed dollar amount, and that's been allocated across certain buckets. If we need to make adjustments to those allocations, that is communicated to Christian. But we have not, in the past, that I am aware of, provide, proactively provided a budget document.
This is another part of this being a foundational year. You've taken up the work differently. It stands to reason that we would do that differently. We just didn't catch up with ourselves.
I was just going to propose, it seems like, so this is really good feedback. I just think you all should take a moment before the next meeting just to discuss it and then come back.
Definitely.
Yes, we will, but I think Christian told me it's due tomorrow.
It's why I'm not prepared with him. I teleported from downtown.
Yes. So, I think that within that amount, the amount we're talking about, we'll have, we'll work with the budget office. But I think you guys just should have a conversation that you can work through, and then we will try to figure out, we'll put placeholders in, I think, for the budget.
Sounds good. So, let's, I think Commissioner Bondima has a question?
I didn't have a question, I had a comment. I think it would, would be a great idea if you were to, for the first time, I don't know if you've done it before, to itemize your priorities. So, we would not just look at the budget and say, "You get this amount." But if you show your need and what's your number-one priorities, it would give the board great ideas about how to distribute whatever you're going to receive. So, we wouldn't be cutting your most important items off of your budget. You know what I'm saying? That's a good way to do it, to look at your priorities.
Yes, ma'am. So, we have created a draft budget and prioritized that budget. We actually just had a meeting with Christian and others in the office last week. And I think that he was as surprised as we were around the communication today because we'd scheduled some time for two weeks from now to have that very same conversation.
I mean, I just thank you very much. I mean, what you said is compelling, one. And two, the work you do, I deem essential. So, thank you for being here, and thanks for educating. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we can do one, we definitely want to have some communication and work in between the two meetings, okay? If you can stay until the end of the meeting, we can work out some of the logistics on that. It's just faster that way. If you can't, we can do it all by email.
I'll be here. We're happy to stay.
There you go. Okay. So, I will stay, and anybody else that can stay. But we won't solve the problem tonight, but at least we can work out the logistics and a timeline for getting the information and working through it. I think that would be great.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, thanks for bringing it to our attention. Thanks. Christian. Okay. I want to ask, I want to turn it to Commissioner Chinia to say a few words before, on an important topic, before we take a fresh look at the consent agenda. Commissioner Chinia?
Thank you, Chair Kishani. I am revisiting some of the discussion that happened at our last board meeting. There was a great deal of community discussion, especially around safety issues as we were revisiting the board's position on the proposed bill. Out of that discussion, what I heard was really a concern for a comprehensive strategy around safety. And so, what I'd like to ask of Dr. Santelisus is that if it doesn't exist, if we could create some type of a status report of what, what conditions are like in our schools now regarding safety, whatever that might mean in terms of facilities or operations, that the board could review. I think that's a starting point for us to begin to talk about what protocols may need to be considered or what kinds of things you need to consider in terms of budgeting and even our request to be certain that our, at least we can say that our school buildings are safe. Most of what I heard had to do with the concern of folks coming in. And so, I think that's a, that's a place where we can at least begin.
No, thank you, Commissioner Chinia, for that. One of the things that we have begun working on, and frankly, had even begun given some of the incidents going on nationally, but I think that we have doubled down since the incident at Douglas High School now over a month ago. So, what we will prepare to do is to present to the board the type of presentation that reflects the cross-functional work between departments such as Operations, the Chief of Schools Office, Safety Clearly, Chief Hamm, and others. And we will prepare a presentation for the board and come before you to give you both, both you as well as the public, a status report on just exactly where we are. Some of the, you know, the policies we'll now be putting, I should say, the practices and guidance we'll be putting in place and the review and what we found. So, we will prepare that and come back to the board and to the public to give you that update.
Terrific, thank you. Commissioner Bondima?
I just want to say, I appreciate what you just said because Friday, doing a presentation in Annapolis to the legislature from Chief Hamm, somebody might ask that question, just what you just said. And I want to be clear and, you know, have a good answer that we're moving in that direction. I'm always sure that question might be asked.
Absolutely, so good. I'm glad. And we, you know, again, it is not by any, I mean, let me put it this way. It is an incredibly reasonable request. Staff has begun working on it. And I think actually, to your point, Commissioner Bondima, it actually helps in communicating more broadly some of the work that we're doing, rather than relying on individual anecdotes, actually doing a more thorough report out.
Commissioner Frank?
Thank you. And on the topic of public safety, the public might wonder, frankly, as I do, what are the next steps? What is the roadmap to the question that will ultimately come back to the board about arming police officers? And I, the information that you will present, I think would be important information to perform that. But at some point, we should try to be, to articulate to the public what are the steps that we have to take if the legislation passes in Annapolis in order to finalize a process that is starting, started a couple of weeks ago.
Now, it's a good question. We'll know a whole lot more after Friday. Commissioner Bondima is speaking with Chief Hamm before the City House delegation. And it will then, if it gets passed, the City House delegation, which is not entirely clear, then it still has to be approved in the Senate. It's likely that other jurisdictions would defer to the city on a city-only bill, but that's never a given. But I think that as soon as we're more clear about the, what comes out of Annapolis, then I think we will have to put together all the steps. Because we referenced it when we talked two weeks ago that whatever step, whatever steps are next for the city schools, we're committed to working with all of the people who came forward with some really good ideas about safety, including the young people from the Baltimore Algebra Project brought forth some terrific ideas. So, that will be part of what the next steps are. Okay, with that, as a result of the general public comment, is there, are there any other items to be pulled from consent? With that, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the items that we are not pulling. That would be items 13.01, 14.01, 14.02, and 14.03. Motion to approve those items. Moved by Commissioner Reed. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Reed, Berkeley. Motion passes 7-0. We'll now come back to the items that were polled for either presentation or questions. Item 8.01, Operator Renewal, Independence Local 1 High School.
Good evening, Dr. Santelisus and Board of School Commissioners. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
And I'm Trevor Roberts, a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
So, we're here for the board to take a final vote on the renewal of Independence Local 1 High. This process looks at different areas for our schools. So, student achievement, school climate, financial management, governance. Independence Local 1 High went through the full renewal process in school year 1718. At that point, the board granted them a one-year conditional. And so, this review is based on looking at their progress on conditions. And so, we're going to kind of start with where they are in terms of that. So, they are a high school located in Hampden. The recommendation is to renew the contract for a three-year term. They had conditions in the area, special education, which they met. So, they were able to implement procedures to improve their practices there. There are still some weaknesses. So, part of the recommendation is to continue those conditions through the remainder of the two years. So, just want to be clear about that. For college and career readiness, they partially met these conditions. So, they've put things in place. There are just some things we still need to continue to look at. We did this presentation for a couple of weeks ago. So, I'm just, out of interest of time, going through a little quickly, but let me know if there's any place where you want us to stop. And these are posted on board docs for members of the public that are interested. And we will also post a full renewal report that goes into more details about these areas. So, one of the main things that we are going to be looking for them to do is to continue their growth they've done in college and career readiness, as well as re-establishing a CTE program for their high school students. Same thing with four-year cohort core add rate. They've partially met the requirements there. They have a guidance counselor, they're doing work to look at their schedules. So, it's just something to continue for us to monitor. Chronic absence, they've met. They've done a lot to improve their data from last year until the point in time that we looked at. So, we just need to continue to monitor that. Cohort retention is also partially met. So, they've done some work to put practices in place. So, we'll continue to look at that on an annual basis when we have final data to see that they're maintaining that progress. Same thing with academic rigor. They've, you know, they've been focused on project-based learning. They have a real plan around working with the Buck Institute. Their teachers have gone through training with the Buck Institute. The Buck Institute is a national leader in project-based learning. So, they have a real set of things in place for improving practice within their school. And they have a lot of new teachers. So, that's just continuing to do that, to increase rigor there. And, yep.
Do you mind if I ask a question on that?
No.
Point? And this is where I was looking to Principal McLean as well, if you would. This was, this large turnover of staff was a big point of discussion, I know, when I visited the school, which has been a number of months now. But, and there was some feeling of stability that had, you were replacing the staff and that people were settling in. I just wondered if you could talk to us a little bit, a little bit about that, because it did seem like it was pretty disruptive. And it's a big, you know, it's important as we sort of move forward that there be some stability. So, that these things that we're talking about, even, you know, the ones that were met or the partially met, that there's some stability to, you know, let some of these things take hold and really move. So, if you could just talk a little bit about the status of the staff right now.
The staff is anchored. No one is moving. I have one out on leave, medical leave. But everyone plans to return next year. We are 100% participation in the first two tiers of the professional development for project-based learning. We're scheduled to enter into a project-based learning boot camp the last week after school ends, that week after school ends. And then, we have some boot camp planning sessions during the summer to work with the teachers in preparation for starting, beginning the next school year.
It references under the CTE program for environmental studies that you're looking to hire faculty to restart the program. Is that, is that the only area where you feel like you're still short?
No, we need to strengthen project-based learning, one. We do have an agricultural class that meets after school. But next year, we plan to infuse that into the daily program. And we are, we are interviewing now one potential teacher for that program for next year.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to just get a little bit better of a sense of it because it seems like that, if that instability continued, it would be hard to move forward from where you've gotten to.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, based on the operator renewal findings, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the Contract of Baltimore Teacher Network Incorporated to operate Independence Local 1 High be renewed for the remainder of the three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2019, and ends on June 30, 2021.
I concur with the recommendation as stated. I'd like to ask at this point, I already jumped the gun a little bit and asked my question. Are there any other questions for Angela or Principal McLean on Independence? Okay, with that, I'd like to have a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in Policy IHB and the Administrative Regulation IHB-RA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second for that motion? Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Reed, Berkeley. Motion passes 7-0 with two absent. The next item that was pulled for presentation is the charter application update for the Baltimore Latin School.
So, tonight, we're going to bring the Baltimore Latin School up for a vote for the board. Just to give you an idea of where we are, Latin Schools of America submitted an application to open a charter school in school year 201718. And just to be clear, the, because the application was submitted late, it was under consideration for opening in school year 202021. After a review process, the board voted not to approve the proposal based on the following factors. The academic plan did not sufficiently address the needs- factors. The academic plan did not sufficiently address the needs of students in the community the applicant tends to locate. The professional development plan was not fully aligned to the proposed curriculum and lacked details on how it would be implemented to support teacher and student success. The application did not sufficiently address how assessment data will be used to guide instruction. The application did not sufficiently address how the school would identify and provide services to English language learners or below-grade level students. The recruitment and staffing plan did not adequately describe how the school would find teachers with the skills and certifications necessary to deliver the curriculum, and the staffing plan did not adequately address how the school would meet co-managing requirements, collective bargaining requirements, and have sufficient staff for the boarding components of the application, and relied on use of part-time teachers without addressing those potential challenges. The budget was not realistic to fund the academic and boarding program, relied on assumptions about revenue streams that cannot be verified, such as receiving unidentified grants and additional funding from the state legislature. The application did not demonstrate sufficient evidence of community support, and the founding members had no experience opening or running schools and limited K-12 experience overall.
So this was appealed to the State Board. State Board remanded it to give them a chance to cure all of those deficiencies that Trevor just noted. And so the questions that they were asked or addressed came from those deficiencies. I'm not going to restate them because they're closely related. So tonight, it's, the Board is considering whether or not they were, whether the Board feels that they were able to cure those deficiencies. Before we get into the CEO's recommendation, we will have Baltimore Latin come up, so they have another chance to provide information and take questions from you. So I'm going to have them come up at this time, so we're going to kind of pause here. Just for members of the public, this is kind of a summary of what their idea is, is, you know, to open a middle high, starting with 200 students in the Mount Vernon-Johnson Square neighborhood. Their focus is on having a whole-child approach, using language immersion and STEAM. The languages that they want to offer are Arabic, German, Japanese, and Mandarin Chinese. It's an all-boys school with a boarding school component. So I'm going to pause right here, and then we're going to invite members of Baltimore Latin to come up, so they can speak to you, and we'll come back.
Evening, everyone. Alicia Hughes, President, CEO of Latin Schools of America, Principal Founder Baltimore Latin School. Over the course of time, we really appreciate the opportunity on the 26th of February to address the Board and are grateful to have received the CEO's recommendation on the 25th. So that gave us a day before we came in to make the presentation. Are there four minutes? Is there a time limit on my speaking tonight?
I think it's, I think it's four minutes again. Where's Angela?
It's four minutes. Someone wants to put the timer on. I want to make sure they're fair to your process.
Go ahead.
A number of things, you know, have been stated over time about this. And what I'd like to state is when we made this application, we made the application with 110 signatures on a petition reflective of community and parental support. And at that time, we also had 10 founding students. Per the documents that we received in reviewing the application, we looked to open with 200 students. It's sufficient parental support if you have 60%, I believe, of your opening enrollment, and that's something that has been noted. We did forward a memorandum. We submitted a number of other documents between the 26th and now, but there is a memorandum that we've submitted earlier today that essentially encapsulates or responds to everything based on the CEO's recommendation, our response to some of those items. In addition to that, the concerns that you, Commissioner, sorry, Chairman Kashani, Vice Chair Chinia, Commissioner Frank, and Commissioner Hassan raised when we were before you, the budget, we actually have submitted a letter. We've made some calls, and we've submitted a letter for a loan. We don't like the idea of loans, and we believe that our budget was realistic before. But what we've gone back and done is submitted a supplemental budget, and we actually have a letter of credit from PSG Lending and also from another outlet that you've received, a 1 point, I think it's $1.1 million. So that would meet our gap year financing, and we actually have contingent reserves because of good financial accounting practices between 3.5% to 5% every year, and we are under budget every year. And that also funds our boarding program. We'll naturally take any questions that you've got regarding those matters or those types of matters. We gave you a professional development plan that is more robust, consistent with what was requested before, and those things are all mentioned in the memorandum. I, two things I really don't like to deal with is the belief that our Board does not have sufficient experience opening and running schools and has limited experience overall. As I stated before, Rayseps Alloquiter, this Board has, the founding Board members, a collective 200-plus years of experience with administrators, administrators at the district level, at the school level, opening charter schools, being principals of public, you know, schools and private. So with that being said, and with our assessment tool, we think there's also a problem there, because just because something has never been done doesn't mean it can't be done. That's the impetus for innovation in this country today, and you don't get advanced or advanced beyond where you are if you don't take calculated risks and chance. The Kirkland Online Assessment Tool does not exist in foreign language. No assessment tool online exists in foreign language. So to be able to do that is something that would be novel and beneficial to our students. And finally, on the area of professional, well, let's see, student or teacher recruitment, we had the opportunity to speak to Dr. Nancy Zheng, who actually was a teacher at Baltimore International Academy, intimately familiar with practices that works, and she deals with teacher recruitment for Mandarin Chinese at the University of Maryland. She would love to work with us. We'll be sitting and meeting with six of her students, who will be available in their native Mandarin Chinese speakers. We've also worked with some HBCUs in identifying other students, and through our own networks, have identified two science teachers and a math teacher, African American, who would be willing to come on board, and we'd be more than happy to provide you with any information you would need about these things. And if there need be more time before we consider this, I just think we should take that in the interest of the proposal, but we believe that we have answered all of the questions, and we believe that you should approve this. And we are as passionate about this as you all are about educating children, and because we're this passionate, we're also resilient, and we will do whatever is necessary to bring this to fruition. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I think that, in the order of things, I don't, I think in the order of things, Angela has to make the recommendation.
Sure.
Can we do that now?
If you have questions of the applicant, you should ask them.
You're right. My bad. Questions. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess, looking at your previous document, I'm concentrating-
Which one? There's so many.
I'm just concentrating on finances, budget.
Yes, sir.
Your previous document, you had a line of credit of 1.1 million, and you had a hope federal funding expectation of $900,000. Okay, you're coming back now with a LOC of 1.2 million for 24 months. This is not a confirmation of a final loan approval, but it's an LOC.
Preauthorization letters are not that, because you have to submit more documents at the time that is appropriate to do this. So submitting documents, having conversations with financial organizations, and getting them based on the concept, the idea-
Right.
-and the people who are presenting-
Right.
-to do, or to agree.
That's my point. This is a concept and idea. My point is-
Yes.
1.2 million over a two-year period. How do you pay that off, and where do you get your capital from? I mean, this is basically, this is probably operating, but you're still going to need backload capital. So where, where is your money?
So we've got 900, well, what's this, 1.1 for 1.2 million, and that's essentially for the acquisition of a building. And the other we have is for 1.1 million. That is capital that is going to be extended over a period of more years. So what you've got there for is 2.3 million for gap year funding or financing without the consideration of the $900,000 that we had referenced before as potential coming from a state grant. So what we did, and we thought about this, because when we spoke, we're very passionate, especially when we gave our first supplemental submission. We're passionate about how we go about implementing our program, and we do not, you were not here for this part of the conversation, Commissioner Reed, last time when we were here on the 26th, but in the event that we do not secure the funding or the financing for gap year in order to prepare our teachers and our staff the way that we would want to, we set out right. This isn't just a matter of give us an approval and give it to us right away. If we can't do this the right way, we don't want to do it at all, because it's not our objective to just open a school. That does not accomplish the objectives that we set out for. That would be a disservice to this district. That would be a disservice to the students that we're passionate about serving, and it would be a poor reflection on our organization. It's completely a disinterest. So what we did, in the time from the 26th to the present, was we reached out to organizations that could work with us to secure the capital that we would need. We have a foundation that is separate from Latin Schools of America that would deal with our real estate, and our president, or our chair of our foundation board, Clarita Santana-Jonas, is actually former president of a school board in upstate New York, but she's also a real estate investor. Another member of our board who would be working with us on this is Jeff Ratnau, and two of his sons would be founders for our school, and he's a local developer that has done affordable housing and done some things with the Downtown Commission here in Baltimore, and I've got a background in land use. So we would work with those folks primarily, and our finance members of our board, Oliver Sudden, for example, is a VP of JP Morgan Chase, and we would work with those folks in our group to acquire a second property that could house part of our day program and, in addition, residential. And in the memo that we've submitted today, when you look under the budget, there are some links for you that would give examples of buildings that could be acquired, and we would essentially balance that along with the $1.1 million that would not be part of something that would need to be paid back in two years. Does that answer your question?
It's a lot of leverage.
An awful lot of leverage, isn't it?
Commissioner Frank?
Hi, thank you for the responses to the questions. Clearly, you put a lot of thought and time into it, you and your Board. I just do want to understand something. It's been a long time since I actually looked at the application or the proposal itself. Latin Schools of America and its Board is different from the Board of the school that you're proposing?
Yes and no. The school that we are proposing, all of the members of Latin Schools of America's Board, Latin Schools of America's Board, would also be founding Board members for Baltimore Latin School. However, we would not stop at just the members of this Board that are located all across the continental United States. We would, in addition, look to have others who are local here to Baltimore City and invested in this community join forces with us. And for me, this is what we call an organic process. We-
You answered my question. I just, in the interest of time, let me just follow up.
Yes, sir.
So the Latin Schools of America Incorporated is a corporation that you founded-
Yes, sir, it is.
-and has a board, and by its name seems to have an ambition to do this around the country, maybe?
In other places.
And in other places. And this would be the first city in which you're proposing? Is that correct?
Very first city, and it was selected because it's near, dear, and personal to me, Baltimore. When I moved back here, I've lived the DC area multiple times since 1996 when I was in college, and when I bought my first home, I bought my first home in this city. My late grandfather, who's no longer with us, he's late, came from Tennessee and walked every landing of my first home in Union Square with a prosthetic hip. When we look at and consider what's going on here, what the needs are, and the extraordinary talent of the students here in this city, and the under-realization of the talent, the under-development of the talent, this is a city that is ripe for this platform. The students are brilliant, the people are smart, but we need to work together to make sure that there are opportunities that make our students here in this city competitive in a global market share.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay.
Thank you for taking the time.
I appreciate you all. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
and then I'm going to head into what the CEO's recommendation is. So the first question they had to address dealt with how they would meet the specific needs of their target student population. So the applicant's additional responses did not cure the weaknesses evident in the application regarding how the school's academic model would serve the specific needs of the target population and the district, or how it would increase student achievement and address achievement gaps. This is a fatal flaw. While the applicant did provide demographic information about various student populations across the city of Baltimore, in focus in their responses on how it would meet the unique needs of the population of students they intended to serve. So, for example, the needs of students at Montebello and Gilmore differ. So they're both demographically similar in that they're mostly African American populations, but their academic and climate outcomes are different. The social, emotional needs of students are different. So we wanted a response that shows, like, if you tend to locate in this particular community, how we need to meet the needs of those students that show up in that community. So you see differences in chronic absence. You'll see differences in the types of special education students we tend to see in communities. You see differences in access to resources, or social, emotional needs, safety, things like that. So what we were looking for is response that was tailored to the community that they intended to locate and the needs of students that we tend to see in those populations. Question two was about their professional development plan, and so specifically, we asked questions about, very specific, like the content that we use, the timing, how it would be reviewed to determine its efficacy, the frequency of the plan. So it's a very, we're looking for a very kind of specific professional development plan. And so while they provided an updated plan, fatal flaws still remain. In particular, because a big part of their plan is to hire faculty who may have backgrounds in STEAM, they indicate that a big part of their plan is to train them in foreign language. And so, training teachers both in the pedagogies of instruction as well as foreign language at the same time, in a year where there's not, where's the planning year, where you don't even really have a school member at the time, is not a realistic plan. Additionally, they identify that they're going to use protocols that have very specific standards for what it requires to train teachers in that protocol. So, for example, they identified that they're going to use the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, also referred to as SIUP, that requires minimally four full-day PD sessions to train teachers in that, and they recommend constant feedback around that. to train teachers in that, and they recommend constant feedback around that. And so their updated plan does not cure that. It only mentions the use of that protocol as one opportunity within that plan. Additionally, again, you know, having staff be available for seventy-four-hour-a-week training with the notion that they're then going to be ready after learning complex languages like Arabic or Chinese to then teach and create lessons, as well as assessments in a language that's new to them, is unrealistic. So that's a fatal flaw. Question three was around their approach to assessments. And so we wanted them to readdress that and how they would meet the needs of students and how it would guide the development of the program itself, how they would use that assessment to guide their approach and improvement for the school as they exist, if they would So the additional information they provided did include, you know, other information. But again, fatal flaw remains. In particular, the Kirkland Online Assessment Tool is offered in English. They're indicating that these foreign languages are a part of what they would be using. And so the assessments themselves, when you're doing language immersion, it means I'm teaching a content area, a non-language content area, like math, for example, in that foreign language. Thus, the assessments, all the material should be in that foreign language. And so I, you know, I hear the applicant on, well, it's never, you know, just because it hasn't been done before, they didn't provide a specific plan about how they would meet that barrier that does not exist. So that remains a fatal flaw. So it's not that you're trying, I want to be really clear because I know other people are listening, and I want to be clear for the applicant. I want to make sure people are really clear. It's not that you're trying to do something new. What we're looking for is specificity of how you're going to actually make that realized and how it's going to meet the needs of students. And so that's, that's not, that was not submitted. Question four was around their staffing and recruitment plans. And so, again, this is an area of weakness. So they proposed hiring teachers with backgrounds in the STEAM industries to implement the language immersion program, but the recruitment plan that they submitted is used for finding people with general education backgrounds. So it doesn't clearly explain how they're going to find people with those STEAM backgrounds. Additionally, again, we're very, very concerned about their plan to hire people who don't actually have to start the foreign language skills. And in their supplemental material, they did not provide a plan that was, you know, focused on attracting people with foreign language skills. They did, in their updated budget, mention something about H1B visas, not as part of a recruitment plan, but as a line item in the budget that you're looking at. But the district as the hiring entity is the only entity that can sponsor those visas, and we're not adding new foreign, teachers who require that sponsorship. And again, there's no, there's no strategy, even if that was their plan, there was no strategy around how they would do that that was submitted. And the statements made tonight don't cure that, that we're now going to go talk to University of Maryland again is not a plan or a strategy, it's a statement. So the evidence is still lacking. Question five was around how they were going to meet the needs of students who have differing needs, in particular, English language learners, below-grade level students, students with disabilities, gifted and advanced students. And so, again, this is a very specific question, and so fatal flaw remains here with this. So while they, they submitted, again, a general kind of plan, it doesn't show how they would accommodate for the, make accommodations for the learning needs of students with these different needs, nor how the school would ensure teachers have the ability or coaching necessary to deliver instruction to students with disabilities or differing needs. Again, they sort of kind of make general statements. They relied heavily on materials from other states without looking at how that would apply in Maryland and what the differences are here in Maryland. And so that remains a fatal flaw. They did not address how they would provide additional support for students who are below grade level either. They just kind of made these general statements about looking at all students as being gifted or exceptional as a frame of mind, but not a clear plan about how you support students. So I value, I think that's an important statement and belief that we should all have about the abilities of students, but students do have differing needs. So how do you support those needs so that they can manifest that excellence that's within them? They did submit an updated lesson plan that was labeled differentiation, but it, what it had was different levels of rigor, not around how you would need the needs of students with disabilities. So again, it's a general education plan that had, you know, students evaluate or identify or recall facts. That's not the same as looking at, you know, how do you modify and make modifications or accommodations for students who have specific learning needs that would come out of IEP, for example? Or how would, how would you make, meet the needs of students who are below grade level? So how are you reteaching? How are you figuring out what components of a lesson need to be reteach or what the weaknesses are? So that, that kind of, that was not presented. So that remains a fatal flaw. Question six was around their budget. So they shared new information tonight that, again, there are deadlines that are part of this process. People can reapply, there's no barrier to reapplying if you're not ready at the time that you submit an application, or we're not ready at the deadlines that were related to this process. So there is a March first deadline for submitting additional materials for the board to consider. Submitted materials on March fifth. We still took those in consideration because there was still some time for us, for you to review, but there's not time to review materials that are submitted today. And so there are deadlines around this. And so, again, that kind of shows the lack of readiness. In the budget that they submitted and the materials, you know, again, there's still a lot of questions about their funding sources for materials. And so, you know, the statement around, you know, they had made a statement in their additional materials saying that if they weren't able to secure funding from a state grant, then they would not open part of their plan. So like, that's kind of concerning. In the budget that they submitted, they reduced the costs of things without explaining how that would impact the program, whether or not they could still sustain the program. They just changed the line items. So that's not a realistic, thoughtful budget that really explains what that would mean for students, what that would mean in terms of what they're proposing to the board. So that remains a fatal flaw. So having considered the eight questions posed by city schools based on the guidance in the Maryland State Board of Education decision and responses to those questions, the evaluation of which has been presented here tonight, presenting on behalf of the CEO, that the applicant has not met the standard to cure the concerns noted in the original decision, and therefore, the board should not approve this application.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
I know that we did ask some questions before. I want to open it up again to see if anybody has any additional questions for Angela or the applicant. Okay, hearing none. Ask Commissioner Chinia to make a motion.
I move that based upon the consideration of the responses to the eight questions posed based on the state board decision and in light of those responses, testimony by the applicant group given at the February twenty-sixth board meeting and here tonight, the CEO's evaluation of the responses, and the board's deliberation during tonight's public meeting, which finds deficiencies in the following areas. The applicant has failed to provide a professional development plan to properly prepare teachers for the proposed academic plan to implement language immersion in a STEAM-based school. The applicant has not provided a realistic teacher recruitment plan demonstrating how they will find teachers with the ability to deliver instruction in a language immersion setting. The applicant has failed to submit a realistic budget and has stated that if they do not receive additional unsecured funds, that they will withdraw the charter. For all these reasons stated, I move that the board reject the application for charter.
Do I have a second to the motion? Commissioner Bondi- I'm sorry, do that again. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bondima, all in favor of the motion? Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Reed, Berkeley, motion passes seven zero with two absent. We had a number of other items that were pulled. The first one was the, thank you, Trevor and Angela. The first, the next item that was pulled was the waiver request for Hampstead Hill Academy. Commissioner Lynn had a few questions.
Hi, I'm Joe Strake. I'm going to be representing Hampstead Hill and Matthew Hornbeck tonight. So I spoke with Principal Hornbeck, and he wanted to reiterate that this is the eleventh annual event and that it's adults only, and that it's going to be held on a Saturday night. And the morning after the event, which raises about twenty-five thousand dollars annually for programs at Hampstead Hill, the custodial staff does a walkthrough the following morning, which is a Sunday morning, to make sure that there's nothing left behind, not only alcohol, but any garbage or any remnants of the event. And then on Monday, before school opens, there's another walkthrough. Additionally, all of the floors are locked, so people can't get into them. Only the cafeteria and the gymnasium are open for the event, so no classrooms are able to be accessed or anything like that.
So with the infrastructure that is being used, I, I, what, do you know the specific area that will be used? Is it the cafeteria or like, you know, any specific place where the event will be held?
Yeah, the event will be limited to the first floor, which is in the cafeteria and gymnasium, and it'll be staffed by a security staff, and the principal will also be on site to ensure that no students are able to access the premises.
Perfect. How long is the event?
I believe it's scheduled for four hours, but if you give me one second.
Of course.
Six PM to eleven PM. So five hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. With that, do we have a motion to approve the waiver request for Hampstead Hill Academy? Moved by Commissioner Reed. Do I have a second? Commissioner Lynn, all in favor? Commissioner Lynn, you can vote on this. Commissioners Lynn, McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Reed, Berkeley, motion passes my fault, not Berkeley. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Commissioner Berkeley abstains. Motion passes eight, zero, seven, zero, one with two absent. I was good at math earlier in my life. Thank you. Next item that was pulled was item fifteen point zero one, Catapult Learning. Commissioner Reed asked for a general presentation because of the size of the request. After the presentation, people can ask some additional questions if you'd like.
Sure. Good evening. Kim Hoffman, Director of Data Monitoring and Compliance and the Title I Grant Manager. So this board letter that we are presenting to you tonight for Catapult Learning is in support of the Title I requirement for equitable services. So a little bit of background is Title I funds are awarded to the district based on our census data. So that reflects students within Baltimore City that attend our public schools, but also students that attend private schools, so parentally placed, parent-paying tuition placements. ESSA, the federal law, Every Student Succeeds Act, which governs Title I, requires an equitable share of our annual Title I award be reserved to provide direct services to students in private schools that reside within city schools jurisdiction and are zoned to a Title I school. So the way the reservation works is we collect data from our private schools, their family income survey data, to determine families that are in poverty within city schools jurisdiction that attend the private schools. That information, coupled with our public school enrollment data, generates an equitable share percentage. For next school year, we are estimating the equitable share percentage to be two point five eight percent, so that private schools are entitled to two point five eight percent of our Title I award. That is about one point five million annually. The funds that are generated for the equitable share provide the direct services to students, provide parent engagement activities, as well as support the administration costs related to implementing the program. Catapult Learning is our current vendor. We have been using them, I really don't know how many years, since I've been doing this work for the past three and a half years, we've been using Catapult. It was a competitively bid process. Catapult did score the highest of all of the people that provided responses, as well as Catapult meets the ESSA evidence level, which is required that anything we are spending federal funds on meet an ESSA evidence standard, meaning that the services they're providing will most likely lead to increases in student outcomes. Data within the board letter does share information about students that participated in this program in the seventeen eighteen, seventeen eighteen school year and the progress they made as a result of receiving the Title I intervention services through Catapult. This current school year, we are providing service in thirty-four schools and up from, an increase from thirty-two the prior year, and we're currently serving one thousand three hundred and seventeen private school students with these Title I services.
Commissioner Reed, I know I have a question, but I want to defer to you first for any questions that you have.
So I guess one important thing is this is a government program. It's required.
This is a federally required program, and the amount of money we reserve, there are extensive forms we have to complete annually that are part of our Title I application. This is a component of Title I compliance that is receipt-reviewed annually. There are over thirty compliance requirements in this area that we must annually present to MSD and validate that we are doing. In the three and a half years I've been doing this work, this program has been one hundred percent compliant.
And it's about twelve hundred dollars per kid. Is that an average, or the number can be skewed based on what the kid needs?
So currently, the way the procurement is, it is a fixed price cost, and please, correct me if I'm wrong. So that fixed price provides either reading or math for the entire length of the school year. It includes pre- and post-testing that the vendor does with the students so we can assess progress and growth, and that is a per-service cost. So if a student would receive two services, it would obviously be double that cost.
This is a less technical question, and it's going to expose my ignorance a little bit, so just heads up on that. You refer repeatedly to private schools.
Yes.
At other, other times, looking at various items and requests and discussions over the years, we've talked about non-public placements.
This is very, this is different.
I, I thought it was different because I think in these kinds of things, the language has to be precise.
Yes.
And so could you just, for my benefit, could you help me and understand?
I certainly can. That's not a stupid question. So when we are talking about Title I services, these are, the parents have made the choice of placement, and the parents are paying the tuition for these students to attend private schools. So the thirty-four schools that we are providing service in, the majority of them are religious institutions. So they are archdiocesan schools, they are Jewish day schools, then there are other private types of schools, like Center for Creative Learning, there's a number of schools. And those schools that we service right now are in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Anne Arundel County.
So the parents are choosing to have the students in a private school?
Yes.
And they pay the tuition in the private school?
Yes.
But the private school's not required to provide them with all the services that they need?
So the piece here is these-
I know, this is a stupid question. I really, I think this is the first time I'm just-
No, it's, it's, it's not-
I think I'm probably understanding this.
It's not, it's not a stupid question at all. So the, so the students, the parents are paying the tuition for the service the school provides. With Title I, since it's based on census data, any student in poverty within Baltimore City, regardless of where they attend school, generated what is our Title I allocation. So then from that, there is that entitlement to an equitable share, that those funds are directed to provide additional supports. And again, these supports follow the same rules as when we're providing Title And again, these supports follow the same rules as when we're providing Title I services in public schools. They are supplemental. None of this is part of the core curriculum. This is an add-on tutoring intervention for students with identified academic need. We do have a very specific rubric. There is, the law requires we undergo extensive consultation with the private schools to determine what the program will look like, how it will meet their needs, how it'll meet the needs of the students, while maintaining a purely secular nature that is in addition to the core curriculum.
Non-public placements or special ed?
Correct. The non-public placements would be based on an IEP. A student needs services that, in a private setting, which is very different from any of the, you know, religious day schools or other pieces that we're talking about in this program.
I'm sure the educators on the board understood that, and I'm going to be willing to bet that the non-educators on the board just had a couple of aha moments.
As long as you can say you understand it now, it's all good.
Yeah, no, it's, I, because again, on something like this, especially after the questions around the federal compliance requirements, the language is pretty exact, so I didn't think you were just slipping some words in there.
Yep.
So it's, this is actually very helpful, and I'm embarrassed to say it's the first time I've actually understood it.
No, it was not a stupid question at all.
Any other questions? Thank you for your patience. With that, can I have a motion to approve item 15.01, Catapult Learning? Moved by Commissioner Reed. Do I have a second? Commissioner Chinia seconds. All in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Chinia, Kishani, Frank, Reed, Berkeley, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Thank you. That moves us to the final portion of the agenda. We have three information and discussion items. First up is a presentation on the first readers, so just to be clear, on the first readers, there are no votes. Kim, you understand it? I, I thought you did, I just want to make sure. First reader on the Policy IGE Curriculum, followed by JBB Sex Discrimination, Sex-Based Discrimination, first reader.
Good evening. My name's Laura Jones. I'm the manager for the Office of Teaching and Learning.
Hi, Laura Hinyan, Director of Differentiated Learning.
And we are here to share the first reader for Policy IGE Curriculum. So what spurred the creation of this curriculum policy? It was the need to relook at and update some pre-existing board rules that you see here. So the first three of these rules specifically relate to the selection and implementation of curriculum and selection of materials, and then the final board rule is sort of an awkward outlier in that it's specifically called out that students are to be held responsible for paying for textbooks if they are damaged or lost. I specifically call out that final one that's an outlier just to say that it was pre-existing in a board rule, but you will not see it reflected in this policy because it references a section of COMAR that no longer exists, so it's essentially being erased through this revision process. But when we did this, we didn't want to just look narrowly at the few things that already existed in board rules and focus just on those topics. What we wanted to do is come to you with a comprehensive curriculum policy and regulation that didn't just update the board rules, but also articulated our district commitment to high-quality curriculum, established common definitions and expectations for curriculum, identified an ongoing process for the management of district curriculum, and created a forum for ongoing stakeholder feedback.
So as we present today, we're presenting the policy and regulation, but I think it's important to understand how the policy, the components of the policy, regulation, and the curriculum management plan, which will be updated for the upcoming school year, which is, we have one from a few years ago, but which will update based on this new policy and regulation. So the policy defines the key terms, provides high-level expectations for curriculum design and delivery. The regulation will set out expectations for development and review, guidelines for making material selection, and the curriculum management plan will be a living document that's updated regularly, and within the regulation, the specific components of the curriculum management plan are identified. So the regulation sets the expectations for the curriculum management plan, which we expect to at least be updated yearly, but could be updated if things change, for example, a new set of standards is adopted. And those components include the alignment to standards, universal design for learning, essential elements of written, taught, and assessed curriculum, development and review cycle, district and school responsibilities, school-based supports and structures, professional development, and opportunities for feedback. There are a set of key terms we provide within the policy, as mentioned. We'd like to highlight a few here. When we talk about curriculum in this particular policy, we are using the formal definition of curriculum, which includes the entire student learning experience, which includes components of written curriculum, taught curriculum, and assessed curriculum. Often when you see us up here speaking on behalf of the board and talking about curriculum, we're really talking about written curriculum. However, the instruction and the assessments are all considered parts of a formal curriculum. Another term that we thought was very important to define was culturally responsive. Here and on the future slides, you'll see certain components underlined, and Laura will talk about these in a minute, but those are the components that we got feedback from stakeholders before we came here for the first reader through our revision process, and so we've underlined where we got specific feedback.
Laura, excuse me, and this was after it came to committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, includes some of the feedback you provided us. So here, we started with a definition where we looked at some of the major researchers in this area, including lots and billings, gay, Nieto, banks, and to develop the definition. The definition takes an assets-based approach and really tries to help students think critically about how culture and diverse perspectives impact the content they're currently exploring. Based on feedback, we also define culture to ensure that people understood what we meant by culture and culturally responsive. Within the regulation and policy, we define curriculum and the expectations for it. We ensure that it's evidence-based, standards-aligned, it has differentiation and scaffolding for the continuum of learners. It includes culturally responsive, both content and strategies, and we thought it was really important to distinguish it, and embeds frequent evaluation of student learning. So the elements, as we've talked about, curriculum is the full student learning experience, and the, the written, taught, and assessed curriculum work together to create that experience for the students. One of the pieces of COMAR that must be included, and it really should be included, is that the universal design for learning is included in all of those elements. The development and selection process, one thing that's important to note here is that there will be ongoing revisions. However, required courses will go through formal board review every five years. We'll also, the CEO designee will set out clear expectations for the selection and adoption of instructional materials, and that will, that selection of materials will include obviously standards, the meeting the needs of diverse learners, and ensuring that their research are evidence-based. With curriculum implementation, this involves ensuring that the professional development and structures support the written, taught, and assessed curriculum, that there's coordination between district office, leadership, and school-based staff, and that there's ongoing professional development on the effective implementation. And one component that we added was that student data is regularly reviewed at both the school and district level to make these determinations around support and implementation and revisions. I think one of the most important feedback, components we embedded in the policy and regulations is the importance of stakeholder feedback in all of this. So by stakeholders, we mean educators, school leaders, industry experts, students, and families, and that they play a very critical, central role in the ongoing adoption, development, and review of curriculum, that there will be opportunities for stakeholders to provide feedback whenever we have a prospective curriculum adoption. And within the curriculum management plan will be an online survey for stakeholders to provide regular feedback, and for example, one of the feedbacks we got from the student group was that we should consider sending that out through social media and other forms of, like, other avenues around the time of grade changes. So when, when we release grades, so at the semester and the end of the year, that we remind everyone they can give us feedback on the curriculum, which I thought was an excellent feedback.
So Laura, can I ask a question on that?
Absolutely.
So this seems relevant to some of the comments that Keisha was making earlier, so she had some thoughts on a, on a curriculum that we're reviewing tonight, and so this policy kind of puts it in place that there will always be a way for those kind of, for any comments like that to have a way into the process. I just want to see if I could connect the two dots.
Yeah, absolutely. And it won't just be this online, but we will have a permanent online avenue-
Okay.
-that we regularly advertise, that people can go to.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was, it was the same.
Absolutely.
Throughout the creation of this policy, we've engaged with a number of stakeholder groups, and we held in-person meetings with ASCBC, P-CAB, and the CCAC Executive Board, and then we shared the policy materials with other stakeholder groups via email for feedback and writing. Throughout that process, we've gotten some really excellent feedback, including when we shared the, the draft policy at Policy Committee. One of the things that I really want to highlight about the feedback we got is there was an emphasis on the importance of noting the need to have close relationships with students and families in order to be able to, to be strong in your teaching practice. So you see that here in a couple of places. First, it's emphasized in our definition of culturally responsive, to say that culturally responsive, it's not just a box you check, but it's really, it's part of how you go about your teaching practice every single day, and how you interact with your school community. In addition, we added a definition for culture and for stakeholders, just to clarify what we mean when we talk about those things. We included the need to look at the ability to support social-emotional learning when we're looking at supplemental curriculum materials and curriculum, and then we specified that curriculum materials need to be able to support knowledge building. Additionally, we added a section to specify that there are some academic programs that might have some flexibility with some parts of this curriculum, so specifically when you think about unique academic programs such as ingenuity or a bilingual curriculum, they may be a little bit different from, from some of the components of this policy. We updated that the written curriculum, again, should specifically emphasize the importance of relationship building and how teachers can do that in their practice as part of the curriculum. And then we noted that instead of referencing all students, as we commonly have done recently, we got feedback at Policy Committee to specifically say each student, to just kind of further in our language, note that we're not talking about students as subgroups, but we really mean each individual student when we're talking about our students in this policy. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, terrific. Very helpful. I think it's, it's a good idea to have it all. Good. Okay. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Cabrera. I'm the EEO in Title IX Compliance Manager. I'm here to present on the proposed policy and administrative regulations, proposed JBB and JBBRA, which would replace current policy ACC. Make the next page. Oh, I have the clicker, I'm sorry. My apologies. So the, as I said, the JBB, the proposed JBB policy would replace existing ACC policy. The proposed JBB policy expands on definitions, expands on protections that are already afforded in ACC. It provides definitions for terms that are used or need to be used with sexual harassment. So Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972 requires educational institutions to have a sex discrimination policy, so we do have to have this. However, it expands it from meaning, from simply being sex discrimination to sex discrimination, to discrimination based on sex, sexual violence, sexual orientation, and gender identity. The OCR, the Office of Civil Rights for the Department of Education, mandates that sex discrimination policies and grievance procedures adhere to certain standards. These standards that are throughout this presentation are either through OCR or through MSD, so they are established already through several guidelines offered by both. Specifically, Title IX, the Title IX Coordinator needs to be identified in documents relating to this policy. Notice requirements, that means to provide notice to students as they start the school year, throughout the school year, hence the moving of, of ACC over to the, or the policy over to the J section. Confidentiality that relates to investigations of complaints, and the timeline for completion of investigations. Goals of the proposed policy are to update the discrimination and harassment policies, again, to expand, to offer broader definite, or more definitions about the protections and exactly who and what is protected, establish clear complaint and investigatory processes for students complaining of discrimination and/or harassment based on the protected category of sex, make student discrimination and harassment policies easier to find, and establish a holistic approach to sex discrimination policies and regulations for students, so that it is compatible with, again, that, that which is mandated by OCR and MSD. The addition to the proposed policy is this statement, which reads, "The Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners shall assure that all Baltimore City Public Schools students are protected from discrimination and harassment on the basis of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, marital status, disability, and pregnancy." And collectively, these are known as the protected groups, or protected categories, in all of its programs and activities. Proposed JBB policy definitions of discrimination and harassment is added, and it mirrors MSD's definition, that revise, revises the definition of gender expression, again, to mirror MSD. It revises the definition of transgender, defines transition, and revises cisgender, again, all to mirror MSD's guidance. Gender-based discrimination includes things like the use of pronouns and names, dress codes, access to gender segregated facilities, athletics and physical education, student records, and the reporting, oh, sorry, the requesting a name or, or gender change. Specifically, the use of names and pronouns is, would be required, would allow for a transgender student to identify what their name, what it is that they, the name that they wish to be called, regardless of the sex that was assigned to them at birth. So it is specific to the, to the child, to the student, and that the pronoun that they identify to be used with them would be respected and would be, would be used. This is whether or not they change their name legally. Dress codes, the suggestion is that students dress in accordance with their individual gender identity and gender expression. Gender, dress code should be gender neutral to help with, help in this instance. School staff cannot enforce a dress code more strictly for one than the other, or gen, even, or based on gender identity. Access to gender segregated facilities, students have access to the facility of which they identify. That would mean that if they ident, if they are a transgender girl, they would use a girls' facility, a transgender boy would use a boys', the boys' facility. Students who are uncomfortable using a gender segregated facility will be provided a safe, non-stigmatizing alternative, that could be a changing room, a curtain, or even allowance of using a bathroom in an office, or the nurse's station. This would apply to all students. This is not to say that only transgender children would be allowed to use these facilities, or that these facilities, or that the separate facilities would be provided for trans children. It is for all children, those who are uncomfortable. Athletics and physical education, school districts must have a criteria for students to participate on intersc- That could be a changing room, a curtain, or even allowance of using a bathroom in an office, or the nurse's station. This would apply to all students. This is not to say that only transgender children would be allowed to use these facilities, or that these facilities, or that the separate facilities would be provided for trans children. It is for all children, those who are uncomfortable. Athletics and physical education. School districts must have a criteria for students to participate on interscholastic athletics, consistent with their bona fide gender identity. And to, to clarify, bona fide gender identity means that it is a hard-held, and this is provided through, through the state law, that it is, that it is hard-held. It's not, it's not an issue of today I identify as one, tomorrow I identify as the other. It is a consistent identification of one or the other. Students are permitted to participate in physical education classes in a manner consistent with their gender identity. All students' privacy rights and personal information regarding transgender status, medical history, or sex assigned at birth cannot be disclosed to teammates. Essentially, when rosters are exchanged, when team rosters are exchanged, that it would just have the child's name, or the teammate name. It would not identify them as a transgender child. Student records are required to maintain, we are required to maintain official student records. The student records, as long as the student has not changed their name legally, would be reflective of what their legal, what their legal name is, which would be the name that is on their birth certificate or other identifying documentation. That can be changed through regular, through processes, which I'll talk about in a couple of slides. Official student records can be modified or stipulated under Maryland law in accordance with MSDE regulations. That said, it means that a person who is requesting a name change, and this is even after graduation, they want to change their name on school records, would have to provide the school with a new or amended birth certificate, a dated court order signed by a magistrate or judge changing the student's name, or a statement by a healthcare provider who treated or evaluated the student for gender identity issues, requesting that the name, gender change, and explaining the health-related reasons for the request. So that's the policy. The regulation, and here's a contrast and compare of what is existing and what is being proposed. So currently, the ACC only applies to instances of sexual harassment. JBB expands that to include sex violence, gender discrimination, and, and sex discrimination, sex harassment. In cases of student-on-student harassment, currently principals do the investigation without much oversight of the Title IX Coordinator. That will not, with the new proposed regulation, that upon receipt of a complaint, my office would be contacted. We, my office would not actually conduct the investigation if it's student-on-student. The principal would still be responsible, but there would be oversight from the Title IX Coordinator. Once on notice, employees must immediately report the, any issues relating to a sex-based discrimination or allegation of harassment. However, there is currently no reporting form, so there has been a new, a reporting form created that is very similar to the current one found under JIC. The, and then outlined is who, who files the complaint, who it would be filed with. It identifies that responsible employees, are any employee within the school system. Victims must notify the victim's principal. So if it's given to the principal or to a responsible employee, they must notify my office or Title IX office within one business day. The Title IX Coordinator would notify labor relations if it is an employee, if it involves an employee. The Title IX Coordinator would then investigate the complaint. So this is a little different. So student-on-student, it's still the principal. Employee to student, it would be the EEO office. Currently, the ACC policy out, just gives a brief outline of what the investigation process is like. And the JBB regulation is more specific, offers better guidance, which is again, part of OCR's recommendation. Who would conduct, conduct the investigation? It establishes a preponderance of evidence standard. It provides for a 60-day window to complete, and with written notice to all parties if that, that deadline cannot be made. And resolutions consist of findings and proposed remedies. Regulation ACC currently does not require that students be provided with contact information. So there's no requirement. JBB does require it. Does not include a provision for staff training. JBB does require that, that staff be trained, and that that staff training be coordinated through the EEO Title IX office. The community partners that were contacted for this proposed policy is, are the LGBTQ Commission, the Disability Rights of Maryland, Associated Student Congress in Baltimore City, P-CAB, Maryland Legal Aid, Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, GLISSON, and the ACLU of Maryland. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Lynn? Andy, you have a question as well?
Um, I'd like to go first. Okay, okay. For, I just had a quick question, so I don't know if it's quick or not. But I was looking through and correct me if I'm wrong, but for emancipated youth, I know that with, you know, for a birth certificate, a parent has assigned off on it. How would the process go for emancipated youth with all of the practitioner, with the naming changing for the birth certificate, as well as the, the, what was it? What was it? Hold on just a second. As well as a dated court order? And, and I was looking through it, and I was thinking, it says that you're eligible to be 16 years or older, but what about youth that are 15 that would like to name and change name? Would they have to wait until they are 16 to change their name legally by themselves? Or how would that process work? So it's kind of like two questions in one. I'm sorry.
So if a child, if a transgender student wanted to change their name and their parent is not on board with it?
If they're emancipated, which means they, they're not living with them, they're by themselves, how would that process work for them?
I'm not familiar with how you would change a birth certificate if you're an emancipated youth. I, I do know that it's not, it's one or the other. It doesn't have to be all three of them.
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying, like, if they're not allowed, you know, not able to deal with a birth certificate, if they're not able to deal with a date court order, and if they're not able to deal with a healthcare practitioner, is there no other way that they are eligible to change their name legally?
Currently, currently, no.
Okay.
At the, at this moment. That doesn't mean that it won't change, but currently at this moment, they cannot legally change their name on school documents if they don't have one of those three provisions.
And with that, are students that are considered transgender, cisgender, however they identify, are they, are, can they tell their teachers or tell administrators, even though their name is not legally changed, that they would prefer these certain pronouns? Or are they still abided by their pronouns that they given at birth just because they can't change their name legally?
So the, so the pronoun now, the pronoun and gender identification is part of the policy. So the, the expectation is that when the student comes in and says to the teacher, "I know my school records say my name is William, but I now go by Shirley, and I would, I want to be called Shirley," that the, the policy states that that's what the child shall be called, because that is what they are identifying in school, in school. So the teacher should call them Shirley, and should apply, if it's, it's female, female pronouns.
Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, I hope this question makes sense. To, to what extent are these changes conforming our policies with mandated state and federal policies versus sort of original content or discretionary changes that we're making as a result of outreach to the community for changes to the policy?
So the policy is written very similarly to MSDE's guidelines, and it expands greatly on exist, already existing protections. So ACC does protect, does say, lists as a protected category transgender, transgender gender identity and, and, I'm sorry, and sex, and sex, sex harassment. So this policy is not, is not less than that policy. This policy just expands on what already exists. Am I answering your question? No, I feel like I'm not.
I, I think you did, or you either confirmed that my question doesn't make as much sense as I thought. So some of these changes are to conform with state law, federal law, it sounded like? And I was curious, state and federal, I was curious how much of these, how much of the changes are to go furthers in state and federal law that resulted in outreach to the community that then made its way? They don't?
They don't, they don't go further. They are, they are, they are exactly as MSDE has, Maryland has the Fairness for All Maryland laws act of 2014. So it goes in line with, with that. It goes in line with, with federal. So the EU, the Supreme Court, sorry, has identified that, that sex, that gender identity, transgender, sexual orientation does fall under sex. It's a protected category under sex.
Commissioner McFadden, and then Commissioner Reed.
The, so with that, which is technically, this is why we're calling this the sex-based discrimination policy and not gender-based, because of what you just said, how it is defined?
No. This is, this is sex-based. So this is sex harassment, which is unwanted, unwanted, unwelcome advances based in, in sexual nature. Sex discrimination, so on purpose, you're treating me differently because I'm a female, or you're treating me differently because I'm male. And then it also includes sexual violence, gender identity, and, and sexual orientation.
And then do we, thank you. And then do we have the, do you have the capacity to manage the complaints? If, if they become an overwhelming, not that they will, but I'm curious, like, because you would handle the complaints, you said, after the prin, the principal has to report it, or it has to be reported?
There are, it always has to be reported.
Right.
So if it's student-on-student, the principal would still conduct the investigation, which is what currently ACC.
But you would support them in overseeing that process?
Correct.
Okay.
And then if it's staff to student, or student to staff, it would be, my, my office would investigate.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, this dovetails a little bit with Commissioner McFadden's question. What are your biggest concerns and challenges in your job, your role?
My, in, in, with, with concern to this specifically? I think one of the, 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 my, not my concern, the, the challenge that I, that I look forward to the most, I should say, is getting out and talking with people, with staff, with employees, and having, I think the term earlier used was the tough talk, and, and really helping people through learning and understanding and accepting this policy. That's, that's the biggest challenge that I see at the moment.
Is nothing that keeps you up at night when you deal with this process?
All things EEO keep me up at night. No, I, no, I'm, I'm, no, I think, I think my concern, my concern is that we, we apply this equitably, that, that I don't want people to feel that we are putting it on them and not providing them any guidance, and not providing them any support. I, I look forward to being able to do that. And maybe that's, you know, is, is the anticipation of being able to do that, maybe, is what, what keeps me excited to do it.
Just a question. I haven't, I still have more to study on this policy and the various iterations of this process, but in the last policy presentation that we just had, the curriculum, there was a point they made about all students versus each student. Are we taking as much precaution or attention to detail in this policy so that we're being sensitive to the needs of each individual student?
So I guess one of the ways that you would look at it is, the difficulty is, which one, is there one concern that outweighs another concern? Ultimately, this is the law, right? The, the, the protection of a transgender person is the law. It is the law of the land, of the land, the great state of Maryland, right? And so we cannot do things or put into place things that would purposely and intentionally violate those rights. And that's why this policy is important, to ensure that everyone, including the transgender community, is protected.
Okay. That's helpful. I just have to let some of this sink in a little bit more, but this is just the first reader, so we'll have it, we'll, we'll see, we'll have a chance to talk about this one final time. Like, does this go to the Policy Committee again, or, so you'll continue to get, yeah, so you'll continue to get input and bring the policy to us on second reader for us to vote? That's the, I'm asking to be reminded of.
No, it, it just goes to second reader, so we have at least 30 days between first reader and second reader.
Come again?
It doesn't go back to Policy Committee.
That's, yeah, I, I just got myself clear about that. So this will come back to us for second reader, though?
Yes, and there'll be at least 30 days in between the first reader and second reader for public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very helpful. Very helpful.
Anything else?
Are there, are there other public, thank you. Are there other public opportunities for input, or will it be based on who you guys are meeting with? Like, yeah, like, we, like, there was a board forum that was now a couple months ago. So there's the meeting tonight, but there's this 30 days in between where there can continue to be input.
So, so like, for example, with the equity policy, we have the board forums, which occurred first.
That was.
And that was a while ago. Then there are broader forums or discussion meetings that are occurring in between when the policy's first introduced and, and the, and the second reader. So I think the question is, based on staff action, are there additional inputs that staff has planned in addition to the forum that the board had? That's what I'm hearing the question.
Yeah, because I think we, we all agree. It was expressed earlier that we want, we want to get this done. So I, I'm glad we're like, now we can see this coming to fruition, because people have been talking about this for a while, and we need to do it. But I, you know, I'm picking up from, there are different people from the general public who are still here, and we had testimony earlier, there may just, there just may be some other input, and I just wanted to know what the process is in these, in these intervening 30 days to, for there to be any additional input to what the policy's going to be.
So in that list of community partners that I provided, I had, this is after the last, the, the, the first initial, my, my involvement in, in the proposed policy, and proposed it to the, to Policy Committee, that list there was contacted with a copy of the policy, of the proposed policy, and comment was invited back from them, and that's been 30 days. I can surely reach out to the same partners, community partners, and ask if they're.
So one of the, but one of the things that I would say we have done with other policies is we have absolutely partner feedback, which our community partners have helped shape the policy, right, and have given feedback on the policy. There is also a step with other policies, very much like with curriculum adoption and everything else, and that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Which is different than consultation of partners. We consult partners, for example, on, on equity, right? So we have folks that we reach out to for equity. In addition to that, there is also additional opportunities that staff organizes for broader public feedback. That we do, and, and that's what I'm hearing from Chair Kashani, that I think it needs to occur explicitly within the next 30 days. So the 30 days between, we did it with the policing policy.
Yes.
We're doing it with the equity policy, the adoption of curriculum. Within that time, what we have done as a practice for expanding the time for feedback is for staff to also hold feedback sessions for the larger public. So I think the recommendation is, based on the question, and I'm seeing the nodding, on the question is that, from a staff standpoint, what I would say we need to do over the next 30 days is at least schedule time for folks that may be hearing this for the first time to be able to also hear in more detail what the policy entails.
Yeah, what she said.
I, I will say that I did visit, I did present. I, I will say that I did visit, I did present to eight CLN, CLNs, the, the proposed policy, but I could do that again.
But, but that's not the same.
No, no, those are, those are the, those are the.
Exactly.
So let me, let me just, let me, so let's, I want to take what she said and, uh, uh, say what I think I, I want, based on what she said. Um, so now we have, so this is good, this is, this, these, these comments and questions and, and feelings being expressed, it's not a critique of what's done so far, it's like, okay, good job, we got it to this point, now we got 30 days to bring it home. And I want people to feel like, if they've got anything else to, this is a big deal. Okay, we've put, we put a lot of emphasis on the policing policy and that was a big deal. I mean, they're all big deals, but some are more bigger deals than others, okay? This is a big deal. So I just want to, I want to know that, the board wants to know, this isn't about me, board wants to know, that in the next 30 days, which is what we got, that anybody that has anything to say about this, any additional input, any additional critique, any comment, any ideas, um, that, you know, keep us compliant with state and federal law, but maybe, you know, move us a step ahead of the, I'm not, maybe I don't want to take as the final word what the state and the feds have to say, maybe we want to take it a step above because we got all kinds of good people giving us input on this. So that's what I'm saying and that's what she's saying. Let's, let's just make sure that, um, we've given everybody the opportunity. We're going to break set a, a minute here. Kim, you, you're, I, excuse me for breaking, whatever, oh, I know Tammy's, Tammy's freaking.
I just wanted to say that for the last three years, it's been on the agenda at PCAB and has been discussed at PCAB meetings for three years, so it's not that.
No, I got it.
Community has, has a chance to come.
I got it.
I just wanted to let you know.
No, no, we're not trying to slow this down. No, I got that and I know, and I know that, I know that's from PCAB, so, yeah.
Commissioner.
I just want to make sure, we're, I just want to make sure that if anybody else has anything to say, that they take, do it in that 30 days. We're not changing the timelines at all.
That's right.
It's 30 days.
Oh, and Commissioner, oh, yeah. So the policy, so actually I slightly misspoke, it's 30 days between policy and first reader, but we generally do two meetings, so it's little under tw- 30 days. So this will be coming back on April 9th.
Okay.
So 28.
So between now and April 9th?
Yeah.
It, that's, I don't know, 28 days.
I mean, I do have to say that it, that it's not, and it's part of, we, we have done this, I mean, I, I just want to say, one, to reemphasize, the proposal is not to extend the deadline.
Not at all.
That's not what I'm hearing. It's, it's not to extend the deadline, you know, another six months, another seven months. But it is not unprecedented that we have added community sessions when there have been opportunities around policies for people to weigh in. We did this around curriculum. We had people ask questions, we had people say, we didn't know the district was adopting new curriculum and staff in between time organized opportunities, not letting up on the timeline. So it's not necessarily an extension of the timeline, but there was a broader desire for people to be able to weigh in. So this isn't, this isn't shifting the deadline and it has been something that we have done before. This is not unprecedented practice and we can do it while still keeping to the original timeline so that we are not prolonging what I think, uh, Ms. Moonie from her seat rightly pointed out, has been a three-year journey.
Okay.
Commissioner Chinia?
And, and I would also add that since this, this is a part of tonight's, uh, the school board meeting and your presentation is, is, is on board docs, uh, there's also the opportunity for folks to send things in via email, because you, you have it listed. So I would encourage people, in addition to trying to have, uh, face-to-face meeting with, with folks for feedback, that's another way people can also contribute feedback.
Any other comments, questions on this? All right, let's, so we got, we'll finalize this on April 9th. We look forward to seeing what you bring.
Thank you.
Terrific, thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Santelisis. I'm Janice Lane, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Davis, Coordinator for Library Media and Instructional Technology.
I'm Stan Wolf from the Office of College and Career Readiness.
I'm Joshua Gabriel, Science Director.
As you know, we bring curriculum to you for review in a five-year cycle. This is the current year that we will be looking at science and technology. During that review time, we make sure that available to both you and the public for review are the scope and sequences by grade level, as well as the executive summary. So the team tonight will be sharing an overview of those resources from both science and technology.
So it is very appropriate that we're sharing this with you tonight. It's actually the 30th anniversary of the World Wide Web. So as the web has evolved and changed, so has our, uh, thoughts around curriculum for Baltimore City Schools, and that's what we want to share with you tonight. So beginning in, uh, school year 1920, we want to, um, change courses called technology currently to courses that are called computer science. This puts them in alignment with the requirements of the Maryland Legislative House Bill 281. It also aligns them with the newly adopted Maryland Computer Science Standards and it really helps us to build a pathway to prepare our students starting in, in kindergarten for high school programming that's very rigorous and aligned with CTE.
One, one question, if you could just explain what House Bill, uh, 281 is?
I will. So House Bill 281 is also in your, um, it's, there's an addendum for this in the, in the PowerPoint, there's a slide about that. Uh, but House Bill 281 is requiring all high school students to have a year of computer science as a graduation requirement and it encourages districts to have computer science programming in grades K to 8. So currently what we have in our schools, especially in our K to 8 schools, is, um, a lack of consistency in, in technology in our, in our computer science labs. So most of the curriculum right now, because we haven't had a standard curriculum, is very much teacher-created based on standards that are now outdated, um, if it's standards aligned at all. There are no specific assessments that are across district and again, as I said, no consistency. What we are moving to do is align it with, uh, with standards and use a nationally recognized curriculum, which is the code.org curriculum. Um, this will contain or does contain project-based assessments and it will give us a, a much better sense of consistency from school to school. And then in the high school.
Yep, so, uh, as Stacy mentioned, um, House Bill 281, uh, the rules on it is by the school year 2021 is which the, um, everything needs to be enacted, so that's the year by which all students need to take computer science. But currently, um, the most common, uh, course which students earn their tech credit for graduation is Foundations of Technology and our hope is that in the next two years, uh, schools will be transitioning from the FOT, um, course to Foundations of Computer Science.
And one of our, our goals for the K to 8, just before I change slides, is to make sure that we are focusing on computational thinking, which is aligned with, uh, the standards in Maryland and also the ESSA requirements. Um, and it will also allow our children to really dig deep into problem solving and thinking about algorithms and decom- decomposing problems, um, and really, um, producing some higher-order thinking activities in the computer labs. It is moving us away a bit from, um, word processing and desktop publishing and keyboarding, but it's not eliminating those from what happens in our schools every day. What we're asking our teachers to do is do keyboarding as a drill, so that they're still getting that practice in and still able to type. But as we know, that typing and input in computers is changing and we want to make sure that we're, um, adapting to that as well. So if a student's using a, an iPad, for example, we're not necessarily going to have them focus on keyboarding on that iPad because it's very different. So again, as I said, we're trying to really focus on a K-12 computer science pipeline. We want to make sure that our kids starting in kindergarten are preparing for what is going to be happening in, uh, high school in terms of computer science. So we want to start them with, um, activities that are aligned to those Maryland Computer Science Standards. Um, this particular curriculum has a scope and sequence that outlines that pathway all the way from kindergarten. Um, we purposely are not including pre-K in that because we really don't want to focus on any kind of screen time activities for pre-K and we want to make sure that we're keeping that as kind of a play-based activity. Um, there are set units in this curriculum. They are, um, a combination of hands-on or what the curriculum calls unplugged activities that then bridge to online activities. The nice part about that is that if a school, um, if a teacher can't get the computer cart that day or there's something happening with the computers in the, in the lab that day, they can focus on the unplugged activities, which still teach those same computational thinking skills, but do it in a different way. There are projects and assessments that we can use, um, across schools so that we have some baseline data about what kids are learning. These activities are very, very student-centered. They give students choice about what it is that they're making, how they're solving problems and, um, in, as you'll see when we go through the, the scope and sequence, there are capstone projects where they can choose to do community, community-based problem solving as well. We also are making efficient use of our Baltimore resources and our industry partners, so we work, you'll see, we have a slide around the partners that we've been working with who've been helping us with professional development and helping us with the implementation. And then there are resources that are involved as well. And that, just as an aside, or that's really true of both the K-8 and the high school curriculum. Whoops, sorry. Um, so this slide gives you kind of an overview of what the curriculum looks like from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. You'll notice that we start with the end product and there's some sort of creation that the student has to do at the end of their time in computer science. We're recommending right now one semester per year. Most of these are some sort of end, um, project that are, that students get to choose what they do. In grades four and five, there's a capstone where it's very, very much student, uh, choice-driven. The other thing to note, um, is that built into this curriculum is the opportu-, as I said earlier, the opportunity for keyboarding throughout what they're doing. So as they're working on the computers and coding, they are actually keyboarding. Um, so we want to make sure that the, that everyone is, is, you know, aware of that and there's also opportunities for them as they are presenting projects, as their storyboard, storyboarding and, and, uh, planning projects, that they're word processing and using desktop publishing tools to present as well. In our middle grades, um, you'll notice in grade six, there's an explicit call-out for internet safety. I want to make sure that everyone knows that that is, while explicit here, is woven throughout the curriculum, all the way through K to 8. Um, it is something that's touched upon in every single unit. Um, again, you'll notice that there are specific problems that are being solved here. You've got a problem-solving unit in, uh, the grade seven, unit one, and you've got web development, animations and games and the design process. You'll notice here that they're moving into more specific languages, but what's nice about this curriculum is it's agile enough that if those languages are no longer industry-specific as we move through this implementation, that the, that the, the code.org developers and writers are able to change and, and move with the times with those, those languages.
This slide outlines the six units, part of the Foundations of Computer Science course, uh, and it really, uh, expands the concepts that students are learning in middle school and with a deepening understanding of those concepts. Um, and I'd also like to point out that on unit four, um, uh, the design process in that, uh, unit, students actually build an app and they also work on circuit panels, um, which are, have sensors, which are sort of like, uh, mini robots. So I know earlier there was a question about building robotics. Unit four does hit on some of those concepts which be used in robotics. Um, also of note is that, uh, unit five, Data and Society, really talks about being good digital, good digital citizenship and, and about proper ways to use technology. Now this slide just, uh, highlights some of the feedback we've heard from some of our, uh, feedback sessions. Um, there's a lot of positive information around, um, uh, we're excited, finally, uh, computer science is being offered and now there is a, uh, continuum, uh, from elementary to high school.
And as I mentioned earlier, we have been working with community partners and industry partners who have, um, participated in professional development, who have offered it. We work very closely with, uh, Code in the Schools, which is located a couple blocks down the street. They, uh, host sessions for teachers on a regular and ongoing basis, um, but we also work with other partners to make sure that we are, uh, not only providing really high-quality professional development for our teachers, but we're making sure that what we're providing, both for teachers and students, meets the, the needs of the industry and the, the community of Baltimore.
Excuse me, excuse me, Josh, just a second, um, Commissioner Bondima?
Real quick, are you still, do you still partner or have you been partnering with Northrop and Grumman?
Yeah, so we partner with Northrop Grumman for a number of our programs, most notably our Project Lead the Way pre-engineering programs, but yeah, they are a, a great partner through, um, CTE and through, uh, STEM ecosystem work.
Okay. Thank you.
They recently gave us $25,000 for our robotics program. So the Next Generation Science Standards first came out in 2013. What's new and different about these standards is that there's an expectation that students learn scientific concepts while doing the work of scientists and engineers. We have the, um, SABES Elementary Science Curriculum, IQuest Middle School Science Curriculum and Curriculum for Biology, Chemistry and Physics. The SABES Elementary Science Curriculum was co-developed with John Hopkins University with funding from the National Science Foundation. We worked on that for five years. Each unit begins with a story to engage the students in a phenomena. They investigate that phenomena through the course of the unit and the unit concludes with an engineering design challenge related to the phenomena that they were investigating throughout the unit.
By the way, I got a chance to see, was it, is it middle school or elementary school that does the experiment with, um, the kind of beaks that a bird would need to use to, I don't know, scoop out, like, find prey or something with the marbles? Do you remember what that?
So that's a bit of a trick question, because we use different variations of that at all three different levels.
Oh, interesting. So, so it wasn't, it wasn't specially created just for my visit. Okay, that's good to know. It was, it was great. I, I only say that because it was the first time I got to see that really in motion and it was, um.
That's cool.
The classroom was a bevy of activity and they had different, some kids were helping themselves when they realized they had the adaptation that was not as effective in picking up the marbles, but it definitely was, was a great sight to see, so, thanks.
So the IQuest science curriculum has some similarities to the SABES Elementary Science Curriculum. Um, it also was ba- based on research supported by the National Science Foundation. Every unit is characterized by a question. Students start by defining their conceptual understanding of that question and then they engage in a series of investigations designed to challenge their understandings and help them revise their question. So they drive their way through the unit with a driving question board where they're organizing their questions, answering their questions and refining their conceptual models. We currently have IQuest in sixth and seventh grade and we intend to roll out IQuest to eighth grade for the following school year. For high school, we have biology, chemistry and physics. We selected to use the Modified Domains Model from the Next Generation Science Standards Appendix K. That means we've integrated earth and space science into our biology, chemistry and physics courses. Because earth and space science had not been taught in high school, except as an elective, we went out and got a NSF grant to work with the Carey Institute and the Baltimore Ecosystem Study and George Washington University to integrate earth and space science. The most challenging concepts are in chemistry and so we're working on that now. Through this process, we've done a lot of teacher outreach. We've invited all of our teachers to participate in focus groups, which occurred during systemic professional development in October. We also sent all of our science teachers and all of our administrators a survey and what we learned was that teachers really like hands-on investigations. They like having all of the materials. They like having realistic phenomena to drive the students' learning, so the kids really care about what they're trying to figure out. We also like that, we also learned that teachers would like to have more time, they would like to have more materials and in high school, they actually gave us some suggestions about how we could prove, um, improve the curriculum that we'd written and so we're working on implementing their suggestions now. We also, um, surveyed those administrators and we had a series of community engagement nights, um, three of them at high schools and one of them here that was supported by PCAB. We did one of the science investigations from IQuest with some parents and they really liked trying to do an experiment, see what it did to their understanding. And then they actually had to make a claim, explain their evidence and explain their reasoning behind their evidence as well. In order to support the relatively new science curriculum, we have changed our professional development model for science, so we are using a conference-style model, so teachers have input into what their professional development offerings are and then they get to select the workshops that. get to select the workshops that best meet their needs. For instance, in January, we had 28 workshops, and teachers could select up to four workshops to attend. We have 96% of our teachers reporting that it's either very valuable or mostly valuable to them. So, we're doing pretty well, as far as our teachers go, in supporting them with professional development. We also have more in-depth professional development opportunities over the summer. Our most popular science professional development has been the SABES academies in the summer, where teachers learn scientific concepts at a level higher than they're teaching it, and then they feel much more comfortable teaching it to their students the following year.
Just a quick question on this. This is so cool. Like, I rarely look at all this and wish I could go back to school, but this is cool. No, it's cool. But who developed, I remember the first time I used this to go to a conference, and it's, it's really helpful and sophisticated. Who developed this for us? Did you do this?
So, the app is free. Kevin Garner, our new science coordinator, made it a personal mission to get us into the 21st century with using an app for PD.
That's fabulous. It just makes everything so much easier.
We're still working on getting all of our teachers on board with the app, so it's optional at this point.
Because it takes a minute to learn it. Like, you gotta navigate it, but, I mean, just speaking from a conference standpoint, but to see it, to be able to be used like this, it's just great.
Thanks.
Also, who facilitated the PD sessions? I'm curious. There were, how many, how many sessions did you say there were?
In January, we had 28.
28. So, were, who facilitated those? Was it teacher-led? Was it internal? Was it external? How did that work?
That's part of what's fantastic about this model, is we can use a variety of sources, because they're 85-minute workshops. So, we had a bunch of them that were led by teachers. We also had external partners, like Howard Hughes Medical Institute. We had Morgan State University doing Science Fair PD. We can bring in various partners, and teachers can suggest on the survey, "I would like to see PD on this." We go try to find it. Or, "I would like to offer PD on this." And then we talk to them and see if it would work. So, it's a very flexible model, which allows to, us to use all stakeholders that want to participate.
I'm sorry. You wanted me to participate, but I was booked. I want, I want to participate. I want to present.
So, let's talk further. Sounds awesome.
What did you say?
Let's talk further.
We did, but you asked me to do something, and it was something else on that schedule. But I would be happy to present anything that you want in, in the area of environmental science and chemistry.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Reed?
I'm looking at physics, 11th graders. I mean, I'm looking at momentum, I'm looking at force. Is that homogeneous, or is it basically, it moves as fast as a kid goes through the module? Because you have a lot of modules here. Now, it's like, over a six-month period, how could I finish all that stuff unless I'm as smart as these guys are? I mean...
So, we have eight physics units? So, you're looking at high school physics?
Yeah.
So, we recommend that physics courses are taught over the course of an entire year, not over a course of a semester. And so, that works out to approximately two units per quarter. And you, you've got to be a good teacher to keep things moving. But I was a physics teacher. It's totally doable. My kids did great. We've got other teachers here that are doing great, too.
So, it's homogeneous? Every school does the same module?
That's going to be true next year. So, we rolled out the Biology, Chemistry, Physics requirement with all ninth graders two years ago being required to take Biology. They're required to take Chemistry this year, and next year is going to be the first year that they're required to take Physics. So, we have a lot of schools that are trying to offer Physics now, but we'll have more schools offering Physics next school year.
Frank?
Yeah. This is very exciting. Commissioner, Chair, the Chair sometimes refers to those of us on the board as non-educators, and I am one of them, but I am a parent. And my son's life, now a senior poly, was transformed by participating in the Digital Harbor Foundation down in South Baltimore. And that exposure really caused him to want to learn about coding and programming, and he couldn't find it in Baltimore City Public Schools. So, he found it online, he found it in YouTube, and he's basically taught himself how to code. And, you know, I, I've always wondered why that is. I wonder even today, and I don't mean this to be judgmental, why we needed to wait for state law, basically, to cause us to focus on computer science, when study after study after study tells us that 60% of the jobs that will be available over the next how many years will require some digital, level of digital learning and computer science. So, I'm thrilled that we're doing this. I am curious, Dr. Santa Lisa says, how does this, how is this integrated into the blueprint? Is it elevated in some way to the level of importance of the blueprint? Because it, I don't see a neat intersection between the three focus areas of the blueprint and what really can and should be an important area for all of our students to learn if they're going to participate and thrive in the workforce of the future. So, I'm curious, how do we not dilute this, this focus on computer science with other things, literally coding and programming and information technology, and the intersection of computer science and people and data, so that our kids have an opportunity to learn that and go on to learn it further after, and then integrate it well into the priorities of the blueprint?
So, I think there's a couple of things. One, to the credit of the team you see sitting before you, they have done what I have asked every department to do that is not explicitly listed by name within the blueprint. And that is to continue to lead to further, right, what the work in that particular area is, right? Everybody, we could have 100 different priorities, and none of them get done really well. So, I think one piece is, matter of fact, when I, when I sat with Josh for part of the, the plan, right, one of my, one of my charges to him was, this work needs to keep moving, right? Regardless of the fact that we have some focus areas within the blueprint. And I think what you see is the team has done that. So, that's one. Two, this is part of what we really need to be doing more of, which is expanding the kind of exposure and enrichment. And by enrichment, I don't mean extra. I mean those elements beyond just a basic, what I call plain vanilla, education that should characterize the education that we're providing for young people in the city of Baltimore. So, within the blueprint itself, no, do we call out, right, these particular areas? Like, do we call out technology, per se? No, we don't, because quite frankly, we have, I don't care, remember the percentage of kids who can't read English text right now. So, we, we do need a focus area. We need it to be on literacy. But I think what you see, represented in the work of the people before you, is an understanding that we know, one, content area matters, and, two, people leading from their seat, who are saying, "We don't necessarily need it to be named to make progress." And I, and, and for each of them, that has been the case, and we are moving in that direction. So, I don't want to make this now seem like tomorrow, you're going to have bumper stickers and posters and everything else around it, because it's just, it's not practical. It just isn't. But I think what you see are people who are leveraging outside resources, leveraging a larger community that wants a deeper focus. Long before we had any focus on science, folks in this department reached out to Hopkins and said, "Let's begin doing what we can do." They leveraged an NSF grant. And so, you know, like other things, no, you're not going to see it in the long list of the latest blueprint iteration, but it is about, it is about young people having exposure to rich content, which we know is important for, for young people to develop. And I think these folks, which is why it's so solid and why it is so impressive, is they're doing that.
Well, I, I think that's very fair, and I didn't suggest to...
Oh, no.
I didn't suggest that we revise the blueprint, but I do think you answered the question in the sense that, in the leadership part of the blueprint, you've identified leadership.
That's right.
And finding the right leadership to develop this very important part of a student's experience in the district.
Commissioner Bondima?
Thank you. I just want to add to both Commissioner Frank and Dr. Santa Lisa. To me, I'm thinking that you have a fabulous team that's working on this, and when you talk about why hadn't we done this in previous years, is back to what we talked about already. You still have to find qualified people to do this. And in the area of STEM and the technology, computer technology, it is extremely difficult to find qualified teachers or to do, it's, I mean, you're turning it out to the entire system, and it's going to be difficult to find people to do that. So, I think that that's one of the reasons. And then budget. Budget and finding money to, to, to do this project.
So, good on you for leveraging so much, Commissioner Reed. You see, you perked up the engineers, the scientists, and the math whizzes on the board. Like, we're just like, why you threw us a bone? This is great. No, you're a math whiz.
Yeah, thank you for the vision, Wes. I mean, I really appreciate it. And you said something that, Alison and I talked about this earlier today, exposure. Give us the exposure, please. I mean, people don't know what they don't know until they get a chance. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Presentation. Commissioner McFadden?
I still want to hear more about with the computer science curriculum and the ability for all of our students to have access. I remember us hearing that in the committee before, but I just wanted to be made a bit more clear tonight. You know, where I teach, we prioritize the one-to-one, the students, all of our students have the devices. Where are we with that? If we're moving in that direction, and if we're not, how are we ensuring that all of our students, based on the curriculum that we see in front of us, are going to have a cohesive opportunity to really grapple with the curriculum that we have, well, that we're looking at?
So, there are a couple of different questions in there. So, right now, currently, we have kind of a mixture of devices across the district, and we have about, Josh, what was the ratio in the STEM plan? Four to one? Four to one ratio of, of students to computers. Ideally, a one-to-one would be fantastic, but in order to do what, what we're doing with the computer science K to eight in high school, and it's a little different in high school, because it's very specific, you know, around more of the languages, but in elementary school, we're really trying, in middle school, we're really trying to teach computational thinking. And so, if I'm the, the computer science teacher, and I can't get the cart today, because it's being used for something else, park testing or whatever it might be, I still have activities that I can do that still teach those skills and those strategies around computational thinking. I can also work with content teachers to help kind of push some of those same types of problem-solving skills into the content area. So, it gives us a lot of opportunity to be flexible, if we have a school that doesn't have the, the one-to-one ratio that we would love to have. The other thing about a, a one-to-one is it's great. It's really nice, it would be especially nice if kids could take computers home. We know that, that, but financially, that may not be an option. And so, I would be really happy, just personally, if we could get to a three-to-one or a two-to-one, because what happens then is you're fostering collaboration and communication in ways that you might not do that if you had a one-to-one.
Right. And the beauty about this curriculum is that it's agile enough, that it can be used on many different devices, right? So, it can be used on a, on a tablet, which is on the, on the cheaper side, all the way up to a laptop and everything in between. And so, also, you know, many of those high schools do have computer resources already allocated for testing. And one of the things we have done is we've communicated with principals that if you're not ready to implement it immediately next year, but you might want to start to think about a refresh plan. That's something people should be thinking about anyways. It's just a technology refresh plan, because in five to six years, devices become outdated anyways, so that should just be part of their typical refresh plan. And finally, we also have started to sought out different grants and those sorts of opportunities to help support schools in acquisition of technology.
That was my next question.
Yep. And, yeah, so, we got a JP Morgan Chase grant a couple of months ago, which will be advantageous for our district and just other grant opportunities, and also looking at other ways where we can leverage existing technology to get them up to date, right? So, that way, even though it's out of warranty, if there are other things, we can apply to that device to make it, so they can work on the platform we need now. Sort of like recycling their current technology.
Okay, then. Be good. Good job. Thank you very much. So, with that, I want to just highlight the upcoming meetings. Operations Committee will be here at 10 o'clock on March 19th. Policy will be here on the same day, March 19th, at 3:30. There's a Board Forum on Charter Schools on Wednesday, March 20th, from 6:30 to 8:30. P-Cab in this room on March 21st at 6:30. And we'll all be together again upstairs at 3 o'clock on March 26th for Executive Session, and Public Board Meeting, 5 o'clock on March 26th, and Teaching and Learning on Tuesday, April 2nd at 3:30. Anything else for the good of the whole? With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Bondima. Seconded by Commissioner Reed. All in favor? Andy says, "I want to stay." Everybody's in favor of adjourning. Everybody's in favor of adjourning. We are officially adjourned. Thank you.